Yeah.
What's aggressive?
Brown Barry, they're more aggressive.
Oh, that's interesting.
There is.
You know, I can hear it, but I can't.
Now I want to meditate.
Okay. That was an honor of Ms. Pagnon. Um, I'd like to call to order the Oakmont Borough Council regular meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. We'll begin with political allegiance.
Councilmember Isaiah Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Paris. She'll be here. Councilmember Deborah Cormier.
Here.
Councilmember Jamie Leary.
Here.
Councilmember John Harland.
Here.
Vice President of Council Amanda Pagnon.
Here.
President of Council Nancy Wright.
Here.
Youth Council Representative.
Here.
Good next. Thank you. Um, seeing our first point um on the agenda, we can take my use hearing, but before we start that, um, our fire chief, Mr. Flannick, is gonna give us everything for it so that he can read into his meeting.
Uh, hello, my name is Joe Flannick, Oakmont Volunteer Fire Department.
Excuse me, he's very.
F L A N I C K. Uh, last month, if July, your volunteer fire department answered fifty-three total calls for service, in which of those thirty of those were in the borough of Oakmont, twenty-three were uh living of mutual aid to our community surrounding areas. Uh, eight of those calls were uh carbon monoxide calls, smell of gas, odor of gas or something. Usually we smell a skunk in the backyard, we don't know what it is. They used their Google it and that's what they told. Uh, nine were residential fire alarms, just usually automatic alarms where nobody really knows what happens or the shower sets alarm. Nineteen of those were uh commercial fire alarms. Um, that could be anything from a faulty system to somebody pulled the uh station or something. Uh, three of them were car crashes with or without injuries. Um, six of those were residential fires where our guys pulled things off engines and it actually went to work. Uh, three of those were uh boat calls or water rescues, so either stranded boat or multiple of anything. Uh, one transformer fire, an elevator rescue, a brush fire and a vehicle fire and a commercial fire. Does anybody have any question about anything or?
There's one.
One.
Any, any question?
Yeah, I just wanted to see, but uh the final payment of the. Yeah. Uh, this meeting. Uh, while we do. We did notice there is a hairline crack. I didn't get a chance to meet with you today. Okay. It's in the truck bed, right in the middle. Um, I don't know if we can have the tower, uh tower bed. We can have the engineer, I'll just take.
Um, I did have one question.
Yeah.
The nineteen alarms, were those all false alarms?
Uh, majority of them were. Some of them are construction people, you know, the contractors come and they make dust and set the alarms off and they don't call the alarm company.
But not over Rex.
Uh, there was one of them that was, but out of the nineteen. No, that could be from anything. That could be they just have a bad system. Um, a faulty system or uh an accidental, you know, person somewhere that doesn't know what they're doing and they put that alarm.
You have to roll equipment.
So whenever we get there, we usually get an update. If it is that we know that it is a confirmed false alarm, we shut our lights and sirens off to proceed on emergency to that call to put eyes on it, to make a report, so that when things and we have multiple calls at a time there, then we can start implementing the borough uh ordinance of more penalties I've been said. Because they just get, oh, they get annoying and they, they, they really waste our resources. You know, we get a lot of calls and our guys take a lot of pride in answering. But when it becomes a burden.
Do you have any specific problem areas?
One or two. And I was gonna talk to Scott this week here in, in Miss Full Bearsons. Somebody else?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll see you.
Yeah, our first order is this evening, this conditional use hearing.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna sort of turn this thing over to our attorney Jake Leel, who's give us an introduction and then we'll proceed through the um.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, I'm Jake Leel. Let's start with the borough of Oakmont. Tonight's hearing is on a conditional use application that was submitted by David and Brianna Hawkins on July second, twenty twenty five. The applicants are requesting conditional use approval to operate a personal training and small group fitness instruction facility at one-two-nine First Street, Oakmont, PA, one-five-one-three-nine, block and lot number three-six-three, and as in Nancy, one-nine, which also serves as the applicant's residential dwelling. I would note that the property is located in the M X D zoning district and the proposed use of the property constitutes a home occupation, which requires conditional use approval pursuant to section two-zero-five dash four-zero-eight of the Borough of Oakmont zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Uh, just before we begin, I will note a few housekeeping items in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code and the Borough of Oakmont zoning ordinance. The Oakmont Borough Planning Commission reviewed the, excuse me, reviewed the conditional use application. Uh, it's July twenty-fourth meeting, at which time the planning commission voted to recommend approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, that no more than three persons can be present during a training session. Number two, that all doors on the property must remain closed during customer sessions until eleven A M. And it must be closed again beginning at nine P M. And number three, parking shall be in accordance with section two-O-five dash four-O-eight J, which requires that all parking generated by the ordinance, excuse me, by the occupation will be provided for on the lot. Uh, with respect to um tonight's hearing, we will begin with testimony by the applicants. Following the conclusion of the applicant's testimony, council will have the opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. Uh, I will then open the floor for public comment. Any person wishing to speak will have your name and address and be limited to three minutes. Council can then deliberate on the application and recess into exact second if necessary. And then council can conclude by voting to either grant, deny, or table the conditional use application. Uh, before we begin, I will introduce the following exhibits into the record at this time. The conditional use application made in July second, twenty twenty five by David and Brianna Hawkins shall be marked as borough exhibit number one. Uh, the proof of publication on tonight's hearing notice will be marked as borough exhibit number two. And a correspondence submitted by Paul Wood in opposition to tonight's conditional use application shall be marked as borough exhibit number three. Uh, at this time, with all those who wish to comment or testify at tonight's hearing, please stand to be sworn in by the court of order.
We're more informed to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Just try to follow the last very day.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to turn it over to the applicant to present her case.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about my small business and for your consideration of my conditional use zoning application. My name is Brianna Hawkins, B R I A N A H A W K I N S. And I'm seeking approval to operate a small personal training business from my home gym located at one-twenty-nine First Street in Edgewater. I'm fully committed to ensuring that my business will remain in compliance with all local zoning laws and regulations while contributing positively to the community. A brief background of how my business came to be. I have a bachelor's of science in exercise and rehabilitative sciences and established my personal training business and LLC in two thousand fifteen. Prior to COVID, I rented space out of a private training studio in Shadyside. However, CDC guidelines shut down the space and I shifted my business to entirely virtual services, allowing me to meet with my clients in various online platforms. Recently, reputation and friendships created demand for in-person individual and small group classes. Basically, fellow moms, friends, neighbors encouraged me to offer classes in a friendly and familiar environment. I'd like conditional use approval to reestablish the in-person elements of my business. My primary, my primary virtual training business will not change. Conditional use approval will allow me to provide in-person, one-on-one and small group fitness training sessions. These sessions will be tailored to meet the specific needs of my clients, whether focused on general fitness, rehabilitation or wellness. Client sessions will be by appointment or schedule only. My goal is to maintain an environment that is welcoming, professional and conducive to effective training. I am requesting this conditional use permit to operate a personal training business in a mixed use zone. I understand the importance of balancing residential character with business operations and feel that my business contributes to finding that balance. The business will operate within my home, in my garage, which was repurposed to a home gym during COVID without any external signage or visible changes to the property. There will be no expansion of the structure, no advertisements, and the business will have minimal to no physical impact on the neighborhood. Most in-person clients are residents of the surrounding Edgewater community and walk to my property, ensuring no impact on local traffic or street parking. On rare occasions, one or two vehicles may use my private driveway behind my home. I expect seventy-five percent of my business to remain virtual, meaning the majority of business activity has no physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood, nor a need for parking. The nature of the business ensures that there will be minimal noise and disturbance. No large fitness equipment will be used and all sessions will be private or in small groups, avoiding the noise typically associated with larger fitness facilities. I will ensure that the home gym enforces strict safety requirements, including proper equipment maintenance, cleanliness and adherence to local health regulations. Additionally, I will ensure that the business does not exceed the conditions set forth for a conditional use permit and is in compliance with all specific requirements of chapter two-O-five, article four of the zoning ordinance. How will this benefit Oakmont residents? This benefit will, yeah, this business will provide a unique personalized fitness service that is often difficult to find in larger commercial gyms. It will allow community members to access high-quality fitness and wellness services in a comfortable, low-key environment. It fosters community connection by bringing neighbors together to build a sense of camaraderie and support. It is accessible and inclusive, welcoming to people of all fitness levels, especially those who are uncomfortable in traditional gyms. It's convenient in both location and timing. As a local mom leading the class, I understand the unique challenges and schedules of parents and caregivers. And lastly, it promotes physical and mental well-being, which we all deserve to achieve. I believe my business will be an asset to the community, providing a beneficial service while minimizing any impact on the residential character of the neighborhood. I seek to continue to contribute to the public welfare of Oakmont by offering a convenient personal health solution to the community, which I am a nine-year member. I'll end with this. Over the past two months, the zoning violation cease and desist disorder has had a significant negative impact on my business, resulting in a twenty-five percent drop in revenue. My business has not caused issues with traffic, parking or violated the noise ordinance. Yet I've been forced to halt operations despite paying taxes and providing a valuable service to the residents of Oakmont. On top of lost income, I've incurred thousands of dollars in expenses for the application fee, zoning hearing and legal counsel. The zoning code itself is vague and outdated. I suspect having not been revised before the pandemic, despite the clear shift toward more, more residents working and running businesses. If this unclear and outdated rules are used to restrict my business, how many other small home-based businesses will be impacted next? I appreciate your consideration of this application and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Brianna.
And go to the panel and let the council ask any questions that they have the evidence.
This is more for you, Jake. When um, when it says three people, does that? Like it says, I'll be, we'd be more committed.
No, I, Scott, there could be a.
There was no more than three customers at the time.
Am I?
Studies, what did you say, sir?
No more than three customers at a time.
And you're referring to the planning commission's proposal?
Right. It is that there was something about.
But I could, just to clarify, I could call up four of my friends and do this at my garage.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're asking me?
Yeah, like.
Yes.
So we're gonna limit someone just because they pay for it.
I can't hear you.
So I, I mean, I can call up four friends and work out in my garage and it will be okay. But because somebody goes through a business aspect and is certified, it's not okay. It has to be less. Like it was not ready to fire the basis. Where did that line of.
Well.
You've, if you had four people in your garage and were creating business, we're not, we're creating a voice bro.
Voices are going to vote if there were seventy-five desks. Was anything ever tested? Like there could be a sound tested?
I don't know. I don't know what the code officer did.
Okay.
But if you have a code officer received a complaint and investigation.
The way that it reads online, if I'm looking at ECO three sixty correctly, is that it would have to be in a residential area. I mean, if you use commercial, so residential area seventy-five, if you consider it square, because it's still a small businesses, I don't think it is, but if you do, it's maybe, right, decimals, so.
You gotta slow down.
Exactly, and I can't hear anyone. It's, it's, it's not just my hearing.
I, I'm, I guess my wondering is like, if, if it's not hearing music coming from next door, hearing somebody talking through a workout is different than it being a noise violation. Like just because I can hear it, doesn't make it a noise violation. And then the suggestion is three, i- is three the normal number of people working out? And they're, what's the latest, I guess?
I, five to six.
Okay.
By being honest. But the way that it is worded, I feel like there's room for interpretation because it speaks to classes and I am not an educator providing a class. I'm not given tuition from my students. I provide a service.
Yeah, I think that's what I was struggling with is like, I, I can literally, I don't have a garage, but if I had a garage tomorrow, I could, I could invite four people over at seven A M.
We work together. I don't build a curriculum. I work with each individual client.
Yeah.
To create their, the program that will help them achieve their goals. So I don't look at myself as an educator.
But I don't think gyms have classes or educators either. I think it's just a word they use. Like if I go to Anytime Fitness and take a class, I don't think they're educators and weren't my paint commissioner. Where?
So with respect to the conditions that were recommended by the planning commission, um, and Scott, I'm going to look to you for some background here, as I was not present at that meeting.
I wasn't.
I believe that the conditions uh that no more than three persons be present during a session and that the doors of the property uh must be remaining closed during certain hours are intended to impose reasonable conditions to address the concerns of neighboring properties. And I believe we do have um some property, or neighboring property owners here tonight who will voice their concerns.
I also think, I also think eleven is a little bit late too.
Yeah, me too.
It will correct this portion. My apologies, Dan.
Well, I didn't hear your question.
Well, I was trying to stop.
I never said.
I didn't hear it either.
I said that I think that eleven is a little bit late.
And I would say with respect to general comments and deliberation, we can, council can have that after the conclusion of public comment, but for right now, if we could limit this portion to questions directed toward Ms. Hawkins directly.
On a dead ordinance.
Ms. Hawkins, will you have your facility inspected by anybody or does it need to be inspected?
I don't have, I don't.
I was just curious. I don't know if you would need to have an inspection, like a health inspection done.
Right. As a private studio and a residential dwelling, I'm not sure if the same, I, I'm held to the same requirements.
Understood, thank you.
If your largest classes, you said, are five to six, have those specifically been ones at like six A M?
And how big is your uh garage?
Four hundred square feet or four hundred square feet. We have a D focus, uh, we can see. I would give you a photo on my phone if someone wanted to put it up.
Would that normally be the size of a two-car garage or two and a half? Okay. We could call up the picture from the Google Maps.
Okay.
I'm just curious about how big the size.
There's a, and there's a.
That's the front. My bad. Sorry.
There.
So there's Edgewater and there's the park. And the, and then the house is on the, next to the corner, one, one down.
Your one-twenty-nine, correct?
Yes.
People let me go back.
Big round, sweetie, oh, bad.
It did for him.
I was just wondering how big the space was, and that's why I was asking.
There we go.
Like hours too.
That is.
Is that?
And, and the driveway is long enough to hold a car um going in frontwards. Okay, some of, some of them there are not long.
Right.
Wait, that isn't.
Yeah, let's tell.
Okay.
Okay, so two people could park behind your house.
Yes. And on a rare occasion, that might happen, but like I said, the majority of people come to my garage or on foot.
All classes previously had had the garage door open?
Yeah.
When, when would there be a time that it just wasn't really hot or?
When it's very hot, when I feel it's in the best interest of my clients to have some air circulating.
Are there any other questions, you know, factual questions? Ms. Hawkins?
What's the frequency of classes?
I have classes on Wednesday, Friday at six fifteen A M and Tuesday, Thursday at nine thirty A M. And they're forty-five minute sessions. And then I also have some individual sessions throughout the day. Like I said, though, the in-person piece of my business is about twenty-five percent compared to the bridge pool.
Well, well, the stipulation garage door closed, et cetera. Present like temperature problem in the weather we've had lately.
That is, I believe, what led to the complaint is that during the, I forget when it was, in June, when we were under extreme heat advisory mornings, I, I did open my garage door because I didn't feel like it was safe to keep it closed.
At six A M or?
Not at six A M.
And I'm sorry, could you just repeat when your class schedule, you wouldn't offer training sessions?
Wednesday and Friday at six fifteen A M. And Tuesday and Thursday at nine thirty A M.
Thank you.
And you, you mentioned how many um clients you have each of those times, just so. It, for the Wednesday and Friday.
Um, there can be at times five to six.
Okay.
That's not.
And then the nine thirty A M.
That's usually three.
Okay. Okay. Any other?
I did have a few questions. Um,
Sure.
I think I know the answer to most of these, but I just wanted to confirm. Um, do you employ anyone who is a non-resident of your household?
I'm the sole proprietor.
And does the gym exceed twenty-five percent of your home's gross floor area?
It's not.
Is there any storage of equipment or materials outside the enclosed building?
No.
And does the occupation involve the use of vehicles in excess of one ton or nine thousand pounds gross vehicle weight?
It's not.
Thank you very much. There's no further questions from council. We can then open it up to the public at this time for comment. I will remind any members of the public, please come up, state your name and address, and we will be limiting public remarks to three minutes.
Let me.
Please, please, please do.
Hello. My name is.
My name is John Altman, J O N A L T M A N. I live at eight two four Eighth Street, Oakmont. I'm a friend of Mr. and Mrs. Hawkins, our children are friends and I am a counsel. Attorney Leland started to go down some of my spiel here, so I don't have to go through all of the criteria. Just as a refresher for everybody at council who didn't spend the afternoon getting re-familiarized with zoning code and at what equal case law that pertains to how these matters are to be evaluated. You guys are not constrained by the planning commission's suggestions, recommendations. You're entitled to make your decision based on facts and circumstances, number one. Number two, the three person maximum suggested by the planning commission, uh speaking with some of the members of planning commission, uh I understand to be based upon a faulty misinterpretation or faulty interpretation of sub clause and eight within the defined term of occupation, created section two oh five four oh eight. That sub clause pertains to private instruction to know more than three students at a time. That's included in a list, but also includes funeral homes, hospitals, auto shops, private clubs, veterinary hospitals, restaurants, and commercial boarding of horses. Contextually, this case law interprets these phrases of private instruction and students to be in an educational context, a tutoring context in particular. Um as Ms. Hawkins already explained, this is not a teaching instrument, this is people who know how to use the equipment already, people who understand how to work out, she's tailoring a plan to their needs. Also want to point out that once the criteria, if we all can agree that the conditions that Attorney Leland started to go through and all the rest with the minimal or zero impact in the, or at the surrounding area, that all the objective criteria are satisfied, once we prove that, then the burden shifts to the objectors and I believe it's a singular, not plural, small objector. That objector has to prove to a high degree of probability that the use will harm public health, safety and welfare more than is normally expected from that use, circular, but the key words being high degree of probability and the burdens on the objector, mere speculation, generalized fears or bald assertions are not enough. But also note the distance between the Hawkins garage and the complainers uh or the objectors who are here today is like a hundred feet. Um, the next door neighbors are like ten feet and um the next door neighbors can't even hear according to the neighbors.
A question.
Yes.
Are you challenging the three person limit?
Absolutely.
And if so, what limits, if any, would you find acceptable?
So to me, there is no limit, it's, we're subject to the zoning code and the noise ordinance. And so long as the noise ordinance is not being violated, so long as the parking ordinance is not violated and even further with the planning commission's recommendation for parking being in the driveway, it's no big deal, people walk. So, um to me, parking isn't really the issue, it's the number of people as the issue, to me, there's, there's nothing in the zoning code that suggests there should be any limit on the number of people in a class.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi everyone, I'm Dave Fawcett, um I'm a resident of Oakmont, but I'm here as counsel to Paul and Judy Wood, the neighbors. And uh also just before we get started, I'm, somebody you know, former member of this council, telling you, I just wanna thank you for all your time. A lot of people, I I didn't get thanked above him, but. Here's what I'm gonna propose, um. We, we need an opportunity more than three minutes to speak a little bit on this. Mr. Wood can speak, he doesn't really need counsel, so I think it'll really help the council to hear a little bit from him as to what the complaints are. And he doesn't need me to do that, or I'd like you to hear from him, but then I'd like to have a little time, sort of like Ms. Hawkins said. Sounds like a council person talking, I just want to address a few little points that. I would say in particular, I did notice, uh I think, I mean, Mr. Fode indicated that the the planning commission made a recommendation, I'm not sure about that. Mr. Fode has an email saying, planned to, Mr. Wood saying the planning commission did offer suggestions for council to consider, which maybe is a little different, but my point is, um, the planning commission didn't notice it speeding. And there's no, if if I'm reading the website right, there's a, there's a section for agenda and there's a section for minutes, the only agendas are for January and February this year. And then um there was no minutes yet this year. The only point of that is technical, but my point is, Ms. Hawkins presented at that uh at that planning commission and then they made either recommendations or suggestions for you to consider, but she, they didn't hear the opposition, so it didn't really seem fair, so we'd like to have just a little time to talk and then need to come back. But I think, uh Paul, if you can um just address and try to give the council a sense of what you um you know, experience, I think that's what, this is, this is Paul, when you give your uh name, address, of course.
Paul Wood. And speak for me, one thirteen River Red Street, uh I've been a resident of Oakmont for just two years. Uh we moved out of the city to build peace and quiet in a residential neighborhood. Um I know you've had the chance to review the email I sent you, I'll sport, I don't wanna go through every point. Uh but I do wanna focus on a couple of key reasons why I think council should not approve this condition. And personal training business out of her. Edgewater is zoned for mixed use, that's true. But it's clear the borough intended that designation to support businesses like a lot in others that are along Allegheny Avenue. It was, it's, it was not intended for the residential form of the neighborhood. I'm sorry. Approving this request, I believe, is set at very troubling precedent. If one resident is permitted to operate a business from their garage, what's the style of other residents? Someone can have a dog with a business in their garage, someone can have a child daycare center operating on their residence and property, someone could have a music studio in their garage. Someone could have a lawn mower repair shop in their garage, operating on their, in a residential area. I think it's a slippery slope and I think it opens a door to commercial activity and spacemen purely for residential. Okay, so homes and Edgewater are very tightly spaced, we all know that. My own home, and I measured this, is fifty feet away from where it's located, not a hundred, fifty feet. Our first floor primary suite windows are located another fifty feet. So sixty five feet away. So despite numerous and repeated concerns raised by neighbors and by my wife and myself, Bree has continued, Ms. Hawkins has continued to conduct individual training sessions, small group classes as early as six AM, often accompanied by a high-powered industrial fan and shouted instructions. We request on more than one occasion, she keep the garage door and side doors of her garage completely closed to minimize the noise and not start until seven AM. Unfortunately, these were, I thought these were very reasonable requests, we wouldn't be here. These are very reasonable requests and we have ignored. My wife is hearing me here, she's deaf, she sleeps with her good ear down on the pillow. She's been woken many times at six AM, six fifteen, six thirty, six forty five by a noise coming from the. I've personally heard Bree's voice clearly from inside my bathroom at six AM, even with the shower running and the exhaust. I have a photo, which I can share with you if you'd like, taken at six forty six AM. With the garage doors wide.
Thank you, okay, I'll pass this around.
Alright.
Um, if I, if there's no objection from the applicant, we will introduce this into the record as.
We admitted that the door is open occasionally when we class, that's happy to have that thing, Paul, thank you for that.
So this. Yeah, yeah, so what I, what I was, why I showed you that, no. While I'm, the reason I'm showing you that is I wanna demonstrate if she made no effort to mitigate the sound at six forty six. I have another photo, taken at six twenty one, that again shows the door wide. Most of the time standard, this one, six twenty one, I get one one.
Sorry, is there ever been a dispute that the garage doors, they're not open?
You, you can't just start speaking.
So. Well, thank you. Let's have Mr. Wood's make his name. I'm, I'm, I'm about done. Respond, I'm going to treat this as a continuation of his first incident, so it will be two photographs at one minute.
So on June twenty sixth, during a one-on-one training session, I walked over at six fifteen to ask Bree to close the doors because of the excessive noise, six fourteen. She complied briefly, but at six twenty five AM, when I left to go to work, both doors were wide open.
Okay.
Just telling you our experience. I measured the sound levels, using a desk. And readings consistent with what I understand to be the um limits permitted by Oakmont ordinance before seven AM.
You had, it's very specific.
I did it multiple times, I mean, it was in the, is sixty, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, it was all, it was all over the place. But I did it multiple times, but it was well over sixty-five most times. Okay, and and the ordinance, I believe, for Oakmont in residential areas is fifty-five before seven. I believe, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I did look up the noise.
And was your meter, did you use a, I mean, residential mic or?
I used, I used an app, I wasn't gonna go and buy a meter, I used an app and I stood, I stood, not, not only did I stand by my garage, which is the closest, I stood by my bedroom window.
So this was a cell phone?
This is a cell phone app, yes, so I mean, but again, if you're gonna, you know, I I heard something said about the zoning officer taking a voice measurement, or I I have misheard it, but you're, you're not gonna catch the sound unless you're there at that six fifteen, six thirty, six forty five. You're not, you have to be that loud to hear it.
That's a good question, Scott. Did the zoning officer make a measurement or did he just respond and put them?
Responding to a complaint, we never got to the subject of bringing the desolate weed out, which we do possess.
So finally, most recently, um, Q received a cease and desist letter from the borough. This was prompted by complaints from others, not by us. When my wife went in to talk to the borough, her letter was already written, I was waiting for signature. Other neighbors have filed, we actually temporarily filed, like. So, just wanted to be clear, there are other people in the neighborhood concerned about the excessive noise at such an early hour, so I believe council should not approve this conditional use and not only because of the precedent sense, but because of our, her repeated disregard for the neighbor concerns over the excessive noise in the early morning hours. Thank you, any questions? Thank you again, I'll thank you as well, it's getting this, thank you for listening to me, I've, I've never spoke before at council before. I've uh never, I'm not a complainer, I'm a facilitator, I try to find solutions to problems and we tried on three occasions to talk to her and tell her what the issue was, to ask her, first of all, my wife invited her into our house to show her where the benefits and and to actually encourage her because my wife was not so personal. Prayer when she was young and had young kids at home. And she asked her, please do not make noise before seven AM. Then we, we talked again about keeping the doors, that was disregarded, so not asking for much, just asking for consideration, respect.
Mr. Wood, can I ask?
Yes.
You find that the sound is acceptable while you didn't get any high, your meter readings, when the door is closed?
Okay, we have a defined shut, because there are times when the door is open this far, this far all the way open. If the door is even open this far, it acts as a megaphone.
Alright.
And it amplifies the noise, so completely shut.
Completely shut.
Completely shut and sealed and the side door completely shut, shut and sealed, can't hear anything, it's like, it's as if it occurs in the house. There, if she would have done that from the very beginning, we wouldn't hear. So that's completely shut, side and main door.
So if the doors are shut, you don't have.
No, but they happened then and I just gave you two, two photos, I had, and I also have video I could share, I don't have it with me, but I could share, you could hear the sound.
But if the conditional use
Mm-hmm.
application required, that the doors be shut, then you wouldn't have a problem.
Would not have a problem and I would, I would, would not have a problem if the doors were completely shut. And if there were, and as a fail-safe, because I don't actually trust that there's not gonna be some backsliding. As a fail-safe, no classes before seven AM. I think that's reasonable. I mean, I can't, you you, I can't have a contractor at my house to keep work on my house before seven AM because it violates noise ordinance. So I can't mow my lawn before seven AM because I don't have a lawn, but uh before seven AM, uh because of noise warnings, it's, I think it's the same issue. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could make a couple, appreciate it. And you all have a solicitor or a advisor in this place, I don't think it is correct that we have the burden, applicant definitely has the burden. You have the discretion here, I mean, there's no question about that, you have a lot of discretion as to allow it or not. And I think we do have something that's coming in to a bit of a neighbor dispute, which we all hate. Um but I really wanna step back and and look at this from a bigger picture, which is, are you gonna allow businesses in this part of of Oakmont? I mean, why do people like Edgewater, why do they buy, it's really, you know, it's mixed use. But the way the planners made it, they have, you know, Allegheny Avenue with the, with the lot and the businesses and a fitness center and so on. And and they, they, they have mixed housing, so you have apartments, you have row houses, you have uh single family dwellings and then you have mansions or whatever you wanna call them, but people come to this area and and pay a fair penny, that, you know, so that they aren't in the city and don't have businesses around them. And they can walk to a business, they can go to the bull bar, that's what people like about Oakmont. And these people who are moving into or like, like uh Edgewater are there, sure, there's density. And I, and I was on council when we were talking about it, I mean, it's highly dense. And they, they don't mind that, but they don't want density by and large and then businesses. That's why Paul and Judy moved out from the city, you know, it's a different lifestyle and this, and this uh notion of 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 uh setting a precedent, I think it is a, it's really a big deal. Because you have all these houses and if you grant this with conditions, uh and you say, well, the door should be half open or should be closed or should be these hours, first of all, who, who, who manages that? Is that really your job as council or is these, should this be neighbors working this out? I guess they've proven they can, that we would hope that they could, but I mean, is this gonna be your job? But, I mean, is this gonna be your job? And so if you do grant this and you say, okay, uh, say ten to, ten to two, you can do this and garage closed. Well, then I don't think it is a stress to say, well, the next person might come in and say, you know, I, I have a garage and I want to put a little, uh, pastry shop in there. You know, have an oven in there and I, and I want to make candy or pastries and, and invite people over. Or a lawnmower repair guy says, I have a, I have a garage and, 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 you know, I'm not gonna make a lot of noise, I'll keep my door shut and, you know, but it's a business. And you know, in Oakmont, people like the fitness center up on Allegheny Avenue and, uh, like my diner store, jewelry store, I mean, they're, they are paying rent. And that's part of what Oakmont is, you know, there is this differentiation.
Two, three minutes is up, so you'd like to wrap up with that thought?
No, I'd like to continue just a little bit more because, listen again, we didn't get a chance to voice our concerns at the, uh, at the planning commission. And we went on for a lot longer than three minutes with the people ahead of me, just give me a little bit more time if you, I'll wrap her up in a couple minutes.
Two additional minutes.
Can I get two additional minutes then?
You have two additional minutes, it's while since you're representing, yeah, okay.
So again, I think it, uh. Okay, that is counsel for the applicant.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I forgot, I missed. So, um, you know, people will say, well, why not? You did this for, for this person, do it for me. And it's gonna change the complexion of the neighborhood. So that's a, that's a real concern, and then I do think enforcement is, you're, you're a policy. And, uh, you know, you pass, uh, ordinances and so on, but what are you gonna do with, now, she hasn't, she and, and Paul, let's say they haven't been able to agree on this. Now you have a person coming to get your improvement tour on this and say, oh, this is okay. Is that the way we're gonna do things in council? Take this off my tooth.
I lost the timer.
And again, I do think it comes back to expectations. You know, and, 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 and again, what do we want this to look like? Um, this, this committee, are we gonna start, start this kind of, so, um, are there any questions in council, again, I think it is important for the, uh, for the group to understand that there's not a burden on us. Correct, it'd be the applicant that would certainly have the burden of proving, not proving, the burden of convincing you that, oh yeah, this is, this is what you should.
So I can briefly speak to the legal standard behind that, the initial burden is on the applicants to prove that they meet all of the criteria listed. Under section, the applicable section of the zoning ordinance. If the applicants are able to demonstrate that they do meet the listed criteria, that the burden shifts. To the objective, whatever you would like to call them, to prove why, uh, essentially. The concerns expressed by. The, the neighboring properties exceed, um, what was expected by council when they decided to make this a conditional use. So there is a burden shifting between the two sides.
And I do think that my expense for you to consider, okay, what did council want this to look like, the residential versus? Yeah, sure.
First of all. Do you have like all owners association?
I'm, I represent Mr. Wood.
Well, no, no, I, I realize that.
Yes.
Those the community have.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, they would have H O N.
If, if so, is there anything in their C C R's which would be relevant to the situation?
Yes. There is a section in the, um, zoning that's permitted home use, business, home use per business, provided it does not cause all that excessive noise. Or we're. It's on this section six point one.
Are the C C R's C C R's?
Thank you.
And I don't.
So they, so, and, so, and then, so it is clearly spelled out there, home, home businesses are permitted, but by the way, do not. Resolve an excessive noise, odor, or garbage. So.
So the noise is specific.
Exactly, yes, that's exactly the problem, nor, and noise at six fifteen, six thirty, six forty-five, you know, early in.
It'll be like.
Mr. Arnold, I, I think that might be a separate.
Okay.
Process, it would go.
Well, I mean, I understand that, I, I'm just. Trying to understand, but when you buy a home, you sign up to C C R's.
Right.
You have an obligation to abide by them, if there's a specific element. In the C C R's, it's probably. That's an important consideration, I think for us, that was.
And I think, yeah, it, it, wait, are there other businesses? Are there other conditional uses? So I'll wrap up with this, uh, council, let me just say this again, I, I do think, why did you come out, what's the attraction here? They went very dense housing for sure, but they want to be close to it, but business is for sure, but they're also out near the river, they want tranquility, they want peace. You know, they don't do the businesses, they can walk a block or two, so, anyway, I hope this is a matter that can be worked out. Between neighbors and I think my compliance certainly does, and, and I know Ms. Hawkins, uh, would be amenable to that, I don't think this is something where you need to come in and, and, uh, give the seal of the government that, okay. Ms. Hawkins, you can go ahead and do, do this, um, I think it should, it can be and should be worked out, but otherwise you're really sort of micromanaging what it should just be, uh, neighborhood resolutions. But thanks for your time, I appreciate, I appreciate all your time.
Okay, uh, I would just kindly ask members of the public to minimize talking while someone is presenting. There's a, our corporate footage shop area that we call, where there's multiple voices being heard at once.
John Albin, counsel for. The applicant. Hello again. Um, so I just heard a lot of talk about slippery slope, mention of parade of oracles, lawnmower shops, bakeries, next thing you know, it's gonna happen. But I did not. Very interesting. I did not hear any challenge. To any specific line item of criteria in the home occupation defined term. In the zoning code. Because I thought that's what this hearing is actually about, was to determine, does Ms. Hawkins' use satisfy the objective criteria in our zoning code? From what I can tell, there's no dispute as to whether it does, if there is a dispute, I would love to hear specifically which line item. To dispute. Is there a parking impact that's hazardous to the neighborhood? Is there any mechanism whatsoever for challenging any of the objective criteria in the home occupation definition? By council's comments. I think he was suggesting this slippery slope that he wants you all to acknowledge could exist. Outside of the bounds of the zoning code, we're not talking about the zoning code apparently, we're talking about, let's just talk about policy here. Slippery slope, don't forget, there are specific sections in the conditional uses that pertain to bakeries. Daycares operating out of the home, lawnmower shops, auto body shop, there are specific code sections that you have to meet to be able to do that in this area. We're not here to talk about that because we're not operating that kind of business. We're talking about whether or not Ms. Hawkins' use qualifies as a home occupation and council's suggestion, I think if I was interpreting it correctly. Is that nowhere in the neighborhood should we have a home occupation conditional use. I don't understand that argument, especially if it's based solely upon a decibel reading on an app for a phone that we don't know the number for. And it breaks the noise ordinance minimum or maximum standard of decibels that no one can cite to what they are. Yes, sir.
Are you challenging that? Are, are, are you, are, okay, I choose to challenge. Are you saying that the zoning. Rules do not address noise?
In section two oh five, four oh eight, home occupation, if I may, can I read each line item?
They have their backdoor, right? Probably, it's a priority. With all of the listed criteria there.
Okay. Great, there is nothing in any of those subparts that speaks to noise, decibel levels, et cetera.
I'd like to drive, may I, I don't count this as news.
Yeah, any, the, did you have another question on that or, okay. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The council is, uh, uh, is acting, so everybody has a right to run businesses.
That's, no, no.
The children, the children are free.
One hour time, please.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I disagree with that and if we need to, I mean, it's pretty important for you to know, but people do not have the right to run businesses. Wherever, in, in any house down there, they're, they're requesting a conditional use, it's not, and you have the discretion to grant or not. Can't take the power away from this council to say, oh, they must grant this.
I'm not, okay, sir.
It's not, they can't, well, that's certainly, let me finish.
Give me a section of the home occupation that you're challenging.
Gentlemen, please.
I give you respect for letting you speak, please let me speak.
Address me substantively. Find a section each out.
Mr. Arnold, please.
And again, his, his statement, I'm just, uh, you. You know, council, you're, you're gonna advise, but, you know, it's not always there a specific provision that allows this, that, or that, or that, or that, or that, it doesn't work that way. If you want a business, you're, you need a conditional use. And it's up to, it's the discretion and support to grant and whether there's conditions or.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Is there any other public comments at this time, if none, I would recommend the, the terms we've named this session.
Hey, let me just have the council.
It's my opportunity to speak, is it?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank, I'm just trying to do a live back person.
Yes, that's.
Good evening, my name is Jan Hawkins, A J A N, Janice, J A N I C E, when I'm in trouble, H A W K I N S. I'm a resident at Water at Oakmont, I home, my home at thirteen Riverfront Street. Since February of twenty twelve. My presence here is in support of my daughter-in-law, Brianna, my son David, and their family. For over thirty years, I led human resources organizations for a major corporation in US-based locations and in Europe. For several years, I served as the president of the Board of Adjustment for Benton County, Washington State. Recently, I served as chair of board of directors for Osher Lifelong Learning at Carnegie Mellon. Throughout these experiences, I have, unfortunately, often observed self-serving biased views of a single individual expressed, interpreted, and construed. To an outcome where the freedoms and rights of another person or even the larger population are diminished or deprived. Brianna is one of the most disciplined, hard-working persons I know. She has maintained her composure throughout this trying ordeal. She has sought to be objective and early on to resolve concerns through previous dialogue and give and take. What she has received in return is intimidation and harassment. What she deserves is the opportunity to legally operate her small business in a mixed-use district. Where the intent is to promote a healthy residential environment with adequate recreational and commercial activities. Our noise ordinance prohibits excessive and unreasonably loud noises that disturb the peace and quiet of the community. Noises that cause, quote, severe annoyance and discomfort. Surrounding neighborhoods, excuse me, surrounding neighbors have shared with Brianna that her morning workout sessions are not disturbing in any way. She has approached others around and specifically asked. She is a striving entrepreneur who is serving clients in Edgewater and beyond. Are we going to intimidate her into business failure? I hope not. Thank you for your kind of.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Hi, Stacy Kittredge, I live at two two six. S T A C Y in Los Angeles, Kittredge, K I T T R I D G. And I live at two two six College Ave. Hi. I'm Stacy Kittredge, I live, as I said, at two two six College Ave, and I am one of the individuals that Mr. Cordes spoke about this evening, and I've been in the pictures as well too. I'm here as support for my neighbor because I do believe that the way that this is being categorized is unfair, we have been respectful. We are members of the community, I live a block and a half away from the Hawkins residence. We have been videotaped, we have been accosted by the woods, and then, in my opinion, that is just unfair of a characterization that we have tried to end this as a neighborhood dispute. So whatever the council decides this evening, obviously, will be the standing record, but I did want to come up here and stand on behalf of myself. In those pictures, my friends and my neighbors, and I appreciate any opportunity to continue that because it has been life-changing to be as well too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary DiMaggio, D I, F N A, T T E O, I live at one forty-nine First Street. Um, I am a neighbor of Bree's, a friend of Bree's, I live just two doors down from the gym. I have been in my home in Edgewater for ten years, I have never heard any noise inside of my home coming from the inside of another home. I've never had that occur. Um, we work out at six fifteen in the morning, like we've said, um, we have never woken her two children up who sleep above us. So, um, I don't want to say that that is a lie, but it has never been an issue for us, for her children, for her husband. Um, we spoke to two or three neighbors, Bree and I did ourselves, and they said they couldn't hear us. So this just seems like a, a wild accusation that we're having like some type of crazy party. Um, it's also not really a class, right, she's not leading it in which like we're all doing these motions, you're kind of just like working out individually at a station. Um, there's no heavy weights, there's no bars, there's no racks, there's, there's no equipment, there's nothing like that. Um, I also want to speak to something that Stacy brought up, um, the photos that are being passed around were taken without our permission. And we are thirty-five, forty, forty-five-year-old women working out, taking ownership of our health and the privacy of a home. And we have a neighbor recording us and photographing us and passing them around to council. So, um, this idea that he feels violated, that the neighbors feel violated, I'm telling you, it does not match how violated we feel. Um, I don't really have anything else to say other than I hope that this is considered and that Bree's continued to allow to operate business.
Can I address that, please? I'll, I'm sure Mr. Wood, real, real quick, I'm, I'm, sorry. Respect from photos. They're taking, it's not illegal, they were taking from my yard. My wife took them at six fifteen, six twenty-one, et cetera. Thinking that, oh, someone would put two and two together in their head and say, oh, maybe we're disturbing somebody, maybe we should.
Quiet.
That's, again, the, the, and, they were taking, so at some point in time, if it could come to a reasonable solution to keep the noise down. Before seven PM and if we couldn't get, I guarantee that the doors would be completely shut at all times, there's a class calling on, yeah, not, not. And I, we needed to show calm, so that's why the photos were taken. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Photos feel like a personal violation. A personal violation to distribute photos, and that's why we're working.
May I, fair, not arguing, alright, please.
Hi, I'm Ellen Kealan, K E E L A N, um, I lived at two three four college up until a month ago.
Two, what?
Two three four college was my address a month ago, I was a priest and I just moved up the street, I am now at ten twelve Fownes Lane, F O W N E S Lane. Uh, I had a bunch of stuff written down, I'm gonna try to get through it quickly, but, um, I just have to express a little bit of confusion, I'm not sure what, what we're going for here because I'm hearing. On the one hand, like, we shouldn't be granting this at all, on the other hand, we should just work it out as neighbors, um, if there is no actual issue here besides noise, which I think we can all agree on. I'm not, I'm not understanding if we're committing to being quiet here, um, I'm not really sure what the actual problem is, um. The photos that were distributed, we already admitted to having the garage door open on a couple of rare occasions where there was extreme heat, so I don't know what they provide to you contextually. Um, so again, I'm, I'm just a little confused at the whole point of introducing that at all. Um, anyway, um, as I said, my name is Ellen Kealan, I live in Oakmont. Um, anyway, um, as I said, my name is Ellen Kealan, I lived in Oakmont my entire life, I have three children, I was Bree's neighbor, um, up until a month ago, I've known her for eight years. Um, and I'm just speaking on behalf of her business, um, a few of us moms that are friends of Bree's, we begged her to start some mom classes. Um, you know, as you might imagine, we're very busy women, we pour all of our energy into our children, our marriages and our jobs, we have nothing left usually to focus on ourselves. So Bree decided to run these classes for us, which we all love, very convenient for us to walk right to her garage. And when the classes first began, I thought they just would be a fun little thing to do, um, but Bree fit, is what we uh came to call it, quickly became one of the most important parts of my week. Uh, after my third baby was born, I was out of shape and feeling very weak, and I was overwhelmed at the prospect of trying to get back into shape. Raised three kids, all while working, and thanks to the support I received from Bree and my mom friends over there, I got stronger and stronger, and as the classes continued, I felt that I couldn't live without them. We even begged Bree to add a third class in the morning because we all became addicted. And that positive energy cascaded into every facet of my life, I started to wake up early every day before my kids, even on the days when we didn't have class. Um, I would do some other type of work or just get ahead of the day, and little by little, I got back to my old self, and eventually I became even better than I was before, and I'm telling you all this because. This is the kind of impact that something like this has, these are friends exercising in someone's garage, trying to make ourselves better. We would work hard, break a sweat, maybe break a record, what we were actually doing was just showing up for each other, checking in on each other, this was about the only socialization those of us perceive on any given week. But honestly, that was enough for us, um, just having that support and being able to exercise and just make ourselves better, so we can be better members of the community. Better wives, better moms, just better, stronger people, um. I would just please ask that you consider the bigger picture here, um. We're trying to do something good and make ourselves better community members, or we're adding something positive here. So please consider all of the good that has come from these classes and consider granting free permission to resume operations.
Thank you. Mr. Boss, to answer your question earlier, council will deliberate in public, but we will hold an excited discussion to discuss the legal implication of my decision. There. Yes, if there are no further public comment at this time, council will recess into effective session.
Or just this or for anything?
Yeah, just for this.
I could have a quick one, I can do it from here.
Well.
Now, M O S T E L is M O S T E L.
Man, is this with respect to tonight's conditional use hearing or something else?
Well, I'm gonna make a comment on that.
Oh, well, I would ask that you limit your comment just to conditional use here, after this is wrapped up, we will go into our regular business meeting, which will begin with public comment.
Right.
On everything else.
Right.
So.
That's fine, I have one comment about this.
Perfect.
And all it is, is.
Please please stand up.
I mean, it almost like they said, it sounds silly because. Council's not aware of the homeowners association things. Down in the lot, obviously. If the lot is saying when people buy property, you can do certain things. Is council allowed to go against that? Or do they meet with these people down there before they put together? Because I know the comments has their. You know, I mean, it's just a general comment. Because obviously, the odor, the other things or whatever would be from car repairs or things that make smells. If if the driveway isn't causing a problem and people aren't causing a problem, all I'm basically saying is, it sounds like the noise and time thing need to be resolved. Now, that's something you can address once you decide on that time and. You know, um, that type of thing, but as far as, if it's in the homeowners association that you buy a property on. How do you not go for that, like with other businesses? If they're within the terms of the homeowners association? I mean, that's my only question from hearing all of this. You'll hear from me on the dog part, but I'm just, that's my only comment on this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because I think that the homeowners association, if it shows in there and you bought property, you're gonna do what it says you can do. If there's an issue, you try to resolve it, but as far as the business, they have, or it seems to me that two out of the three that are only there. They already meet and they just need to decide something on the other thing, that's all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are going, well, if there's a motion to adjourn to the next session.
Some of us, yeah.
Then or they made the motion and Sally Wilson signed the list, and we're going for a brief time fix.
Go to the scene where Thursday, Thursday. January, Thursday, yeah, yeah, I like it, it's cool.
Yeah, I've said so a lot, I think a lot of amazing ones.
It's a challenge.
Yeah. A lot of common.
And then very.
Of that Hawkins. So they. So we have two.
Um.
Obviously.
Yes, I need to make. Do you know what I mean?
Right. And. And that's not.
I think they wanted you.
On the other side of all. And the children, kids, we have teenagers. There's gonna be a movie. All of this. Where is this?
My woman is mentioning, possibly you could, you know, you can buy it in your comments, you're right, you can count them on to. There's. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Except like I know you're being shot.
You know, grandma.
You're so good at asking. Not really, you know, know the rights. Yeah.
And here the.
I'll say, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I know I have a re-. No, I hate it, sorry, down there. Like I said, now it turns. But he looks bad.
Yeah. Mr. Rock, no, you shouldn't, I never looked at you, assuming.
Well, you're.
You're like. Yeah, I.
You know, my many questions are obvious, you tell them.
You have to apply for it.
Yeah.
Okay, you're top of the art.
And then one one one. People think longer.
Oh, yeah, but I'm.
Just like.
And they play those winners on the street, says you don't give a fuck, they went spraying patients, nobody can.
You didn't know enough, and I have a, I'm, I don't even live there. Like I said, when you buy that house and you have your own H O P and people, and it says in there, you can do it, you're gonna do it.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, yeah, thank you. So are you for or against the dog park? I have to know, but I'm learning the data.
I'm.
I don't even know where it is, I didn't know what it's at.
It's right, we have eight feet behind our garage and. That's not.
You get this today.
After my.
I was just like.
Yes. And then.
Don't understand here.
So I'm like, so we're really, ever heard, can't miss one. I ran into one thousand.
Right now, they think like that, I'm like. I'm like a big cat, God, that's why I like this, honestly, I don't have a safe place to stay. Yeah, that's.
You are, yes.
I'm the first, I'm the first one, so it's a great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're just sort of, you're a person. Well, mainly, I'm just, um, I come to these. And then, like, there he likes to do involuntar. You come with me, yeah. But, um, you're too. I do also do it. It's nine years, this time they're.
Yeah.
He's like there they go.
But no, no, and that was my shit, but I don't think she'll water to the. It's your problem. She's right, it's, it's, I don't wanna see that right now, it's. As well, the garbage, the work, and all kinds of things. And right inside.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't, when you buy a house and say, okay, the. Didn't get much.
I was still wearing something, so today I'd say.
Sure.
But I'm like.
So that.
Right, and I don't.
I don't, I mean, we have the train, yeah. Cause they come through to a front. Yeah, that, you know, it's like, well, you know, it's.
Right, well.
You know, send me see. Of course, he's got to be best.
Well, plus I think we do probably have to be seen down at the tower, because you know, so.
I say, I say. Out of the public, when you're transparent. That's my.
So they stayed, they busy, then they. I heard frequently with so. They came, said they can't. My mom said.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah. I like everybody doing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But I didn't know. My first, this is my first. Classic. Yeah. So what's he doing?
I don't know.
That's not, he's in the garden. I was wondering about that. You might see grandma. I just like that. Put that whole sign up, you know. It's not, it's my ring set, my. Oh, I. Time. That was the only by the age and that. Trip on a video, yeah, my. You're in a short, you're not.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll say.
I'll tell you.
I'll tell him.
What's the name of her shop?
Sue. That's Sue Maddie.
Thirty years. I mean. So I can write with children.
I don't know, I just wanted to spend a while. I totally don't want us, but I didn't see them. But I know how. Really crazy. Like that happens, you know, you know.
Oh, I would say that one.
I just got. So he's like, are you calling me a liar?
Oh, yeah.
Like that, but I'm completely. But then he apologized saying, I don't want to get like that. But I know it's very happy with ninety years by day.
That was the only time I was serious.
And I don't know if that's the one that had the dog park too. Because they were told it wouldn't be for like a year. And nothing was happening, they were coming, and then. And they, I saw, and a giant action. They have it out for bid, it's starting after a fall. He found one, two days later, this women. He's like, whoa, what happened? You picked the two people on the committee?
Not like, you know, it's pretty.
Yeah, maybe not.
I've just sort of doing, and I give us both three years, however, hell.
Okay. Cause I thought, I'm like, he knows that something's later.
I don't know.
But you like your sandwich, you do?
Yeah, I like.
Who can't want to do with life? I mean, something that has to do with politics or.
Yeah, I'm like, politics, international studies.
Uh, that's been involved going to other countries and trying this, you're saying internationally.
Yeah, I thought the international, yeah. Maybe like international, we're right now. I'm kind of open, I'm broad, I'm, you know, but. You said we figured out.
But this is like an internship, I'm doing.
Yeah, sometimes I'm not.
It's good experience.
Yeah. It's something.
For your resume. Yeah, I like seeing young folks.
Um. Yeah, I'm trying. I'm.
They don't involve in a lot.
So at this time I invite, and I would before we begin remind council please don't we speak one at a time refrain from speaking over each other just to make our court reporters shot easier tonight. John has uh recommended that we essentially poll the individual council members to see whether based off of the review of section four oh eight uh council believes that all the conditions have been satisfied so I can proceed under that way if council would like.
Is there a reason not to have discussion?
No, no.
No, no, no. Don't discuss, I'm just saying. I poll Isaiah first.
We can we can go around we'll start on this side of that. John says it was your suggestion what we get closer to.
I believe the applicant has met their burden of proof and they should be ready their conditional use.
John.
I agree. Yes, they met their burden.
I can hear you, John.
Yeah, I try to breathe. The applicant has met their verbs.
I agree and then I think we could talk whether or not the conditions that were recommended seem they're inappropriate.
I too agree um that they didn't need the conditions and I do wanna discuss the planning commission's suggestions and consider that after we reach this first round.
Uh my only concern as in regard to the uh conditional uses is um environmental impact which I think is the complaint at hand with the noise I think that there are potential ways to mitigate that under conditions so I would be happy to have that discussion.
I also agree with Jamie uh um but I agree the conditions have been met but I we have to discuss the planning commission and what the recommendations are.
Uh I also agree that the uh conditions have been met and like to further conversation.
So seeing that council.
He could she couldn't hear you, Isaiah, I'm sorry.
They passed the.
Conditions have been met.
The conditions have been met and I would like to further the conversation on the planning commission recommendations.
So it seems that council is in agreement with respect to the specific criteria set for under zoning ordinance so at this time we can target the recommendations uh set forth by the planning commission um which I will just put down state for the record um that no more than three persons can be present during a session that all doors to the property must remain closed during customer sessions until eleven A M and must be closed again beginning at nine P M and that parking shall be in accordance with subsection J which requires that all parking generated by the occupation will be provided for on the lot I will note from a legal perspective that does not need to be a separate uh condition that's already required by section by section four oh eight so really we're looking at the amount uh or the limit on the number of persons that can be present and the hours during which the exterior doors must remain closed so I will gladly turn it back over to council at this time.
Isaiah, you wanna start or something?
Yes, um.
And Isaiah, please lean into the microphone without.
So I think the uh number uh being proposed of persons at three is a little bit low I after hearing your testimony and I think that six is uh could be could work in a space as long as it you know complies uh with the other ordinances in zoning um I also think that eleven A M is a is late in the day for you to be able to open up your garage door I think that with respect to you can start mowing your lawn at seven o'clock why can't you open your doors?
Eight.
And or two uh that we can move it uh to what um the time you mow your grass to then eight o'clock. Need by those movements and there's such suggestions.
I agree that it should be moved to eight A M with the doors closed um and then whatever time our voice ordinance starts at night to close at that time um and the amount of people I get I I I agree if it's not going over the noise violation then the amount of people doesn't matter but once it goes over the noise violation then it does matter and it is not on my conditional use.
I agree with Jen I think keeping the garage door closed until eight is reasonable to ensure that it's not impacting the environment especially at six o'clock in the morning or before by the time I like that.
I too think you could have as many students as is comfortably fits in your space and and the the noise I I do see as something that I would like us to address and pardon me recommend that we that the doors just have to stay closed and add air conditioning I mean whatever would be necessary um my proposal believe that the doors have remained closed as long as the session is in action you know when you have actual clients there um but otherwise uh no other restrictions.
I disagree with you Nancy because I think that that hits the too slippery slope with um whether I'm doing this privately or through a business so like again I P M tomorrow if I had a garage half my door open according to our E code daylight is seven A M till ten P M so if my music isn't louder than construction or lawnmower I can start at seven A M with my door open no seven A M if it's not flatter I can start at seven A M if it is akin to a lawnmower or construction then I should wait till eight A M to have my door open but just because you have the business licensure we're adding this like are we gonna walk into everybody with a garage that's working out and now ask them if they have a business or not like I think that's unadaptable um I think it's a lot more reasonable to abide by the sound ordinances we have I agree with the comments about if the number of people doesn't seem to impactive um then there's no restrictions on that and being that we don't have accurate like decimal readers like I have a husband that works in the music industry he he has talked to me about I asked him about how those work on phone apps and he said you know they're uncalibrated they're nonlinear they are limited dynamic rain the hardware variability like we don't actually have real evidence that we are hitting certain decimal if we are and we use the appropriate professional tools I think that has a whole different discussion um and if you were to say like four goes over the decimals or four stays under five goes over the decimal so like right now if they're abided by a fire safety code I think you can't put a limit on that and I think that seven A M is reasonable unless it's going over it's louder than a lawnmower then it's eight A M.
I re- I recommend a most specific limit on number of people doors closed until eight A M. Yeah, I think that's that's a reasonable and I think that the people who both have a another avenue via the uh homeowners association considering your C C uh I think somewhat this is a a favorite neighbor thing. That that may be a more appropriate
I think that class size should be limited to no more than four and I think that the doors both exterior doors to the garage should be shut until eight A M.
Well, so I I've I've heard a few different suggestions denied by council uh with respect to uh start with whether there should be a condition with respect to the number of persons in attendance we can just go around and say yea or nay to whether you believe there should be that condition those does that work for everyone? Isaiah?
Nay.
Jen?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
May I say?
Nay, but I do have a question would there just be nay but then aligned with fire code like appropriate by so.
You you.
So it does you can have you know an all American rejects.
Well.
You're fascinating.
Go on.
Nay.
Dad?
Yay.
And then with respect to uh the hours restriction for the doors being closed I believe the options are seven A M and eight A M.
Or all day.
Or all day.
Or while or while classes were I'm sorry but while classes.
So again we can just.
I have some question there's a lot of people at eight I'm just wondering this is it eight o'clock with music or is it eight o'clock all the time?
Eight o'clock for me.
But I can't work out with my door open like we're just like.
It's not a business.
Yeah.
These are specials.
Right.
We're hearing the argument it says like.
We complain about the labor work.
Like tomorrow.
One at a time please.
But if tomorrow all these women say okay well we're just coming over to workout and they're not doing it as a business they're just group fun then technically if there's no music and no violation it's seven A M they could have that open.
But it is.
But music is part of the.
It it is a business and.
It is a business and there is a history.
And it's she has a supply of of noise issues so um I'm sorry.
You did you.
I don't know. I heard you.
Oh, I just said there is a business and there is a history of the door being open even before of noise being happening in the morning so I guess you know yeah you could make enemies of your neighbors too if you wanted to start working in my house you wanna start working at six A M see you there tomorrow. No, I don't want that but like. I I'm just I'm struggling with the gray area of like are we gonna police every human in over that has their garage door open at seven A M ask are you a business or are you not like that's where you're creating right you're not gonna do that you're only gonna do this to this one person.
But if that's why we're relying.
There are like this this opens the door.
Let's let's go around and have everybody find as to seven o'clock eight o'clock or while training sessions are being offered Dad we'll start with you on this one.
Eight o'clock.
John?
Eight A M.
Seven if there's no music like if there's no issue with music you can have it.
Okay, I'd rather shut the I'm thinking eight.
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 Seven if it's clear below the decimal.
Yeah.
So the condition that council seems to be in favor of is that all exterior doors to the area of the premises being used for the proposed home occupation will remain closed while in-person sessions are occurring until eight A M is that a condition that the applicant is willing to agree to?
The opposition originally asked me to keep my garage door shut until seven A M so I'm not sure when the eight A M is coming from. Well, the planning committee said eleven right so we're we're lowering it from the plan what the planning committee said.
But again our our borough pound sound ordinance is if by a certain decimal level it's within that at seven A M she's fine it's just if it's louder than a lawnmower at eight A M like.
Um I'm just going to. Uh you are easy.
Just we're getting your seven o'clock your eight o'clock hours this in the borough code I can begin construction activity at seven A M construction activity however if I wanted to run my lawnmower or leaf blower or other landscape equipment I cannot start that until eight A M that's the difference between those hours I'm coming up with
Yeah.
And that's in our ordinance under decimal levels.
Sorry, no, we're shocked with that.
That's and that's the regular that covers regular um activity you know outdoor activity that we would do in in our own homes is not for eight.
Right.
Um and maybe because I don't get up till then I think I you know seven to me is is an early hour.
And from a practical standpoint I believe Ms. Hawkins you're currently you're only offering a six fifteen A M and a nine thirty A M class is that correct?
Yes, I am individual clients that I meet with.
Oh.
So it would apply just to the first class of your day.
And then any possibly individual clients that would be scheduled for seven o'clock or seven fifteen. And I did see a couple hands raised by the respective council I believe Mr. Altman as far as then.
Yeah. So uh Scott answered one of my questions which is what does the code say about when construction activity begins so we know that's seven A F because I we've done a lot of construction in our house over the past few years and it's gonna start at seven with air compressors and every other manner of noise and nobody can say anything about so I guarantee these classes aren't that.
But one of them matters you don't have construction three days a week on a regular basis.
That's what I do.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. Your house.
You should milk or something.
Need a lot of her.
Yeah, uh but that's beside the point. So so the the real issue I think is I don't understand why this isn't as simple I believe as this is suggesting we we have in those ordinance in the borough and I know that we're talking about a business but to her very valid point if every one of her clients says you know what just because we think this is so ridiculous we're just not gonna pay anymore then none of you guys have a say on any of this that is a valid point I know we're talking about a business but what if everyone decides that eight A M is yes so they're just not gonna pay anymore.
But you still have to follow the noise.
Yeah, absolutely no one no one would suggest you don't have to follow the noise by the bank.
Sure.
That's eight.
Sure. I think you asked him if they would agree to this I don't know if I opened this up for a real argument I completely disagree with counsel he's making this argument if you ask us shall we agree we're eight o'clock we are and by saying that we can't appeal on that we can't cause any problems it seems reasonable he talks about himself his wife is is getting woken up in the morning she doesn't have classes that early so I apologize for uh advocating a bit when we're deliberating but yes we would agree and not appeal if that were the decision eight A M.
Thank you.
But not just fair.
That's right.
So where do you find the husband in fourth?
He mentioned that but.
But we're.
So we have
Thanks.
We obviously have some time at eight we have another asking for seven.
And the planning commission say eleven I just need to put that after.
Planning commission right nine to eleven.
With no explanation okay.
Yeah, so yeah.
But the opposition I think agree with seven that's why not seven.
Yeah.
So we.
And if seven is the code for noise.
But eight eight of one is really the code for noise because a leaf blower is the one.
It's not decimals right? No, structure is not that long leaf blower is.
But this yeah this is what I think we're but some of us it's kind of without courtesy it's and that's sort of where I'm coming in we had an eight o'clock rule for um noises as loud as leaf blowers and and lawn mowers as it recognition that before that it is disturbing to people to have that much noise and I think this kind of noise would fall more in that category and that's why I would say eight and maybe we could just take the number I need to go and see what people's number are and see if you have a seven A M if you have yes that's what I'm saying yeah.
So I think so if there is a motion you want me to start with seven or eight it's eight Jen said eight first.
I just get in construction now that it's seven and they're playing music while they work around my house.
So let's start to people understanding emotion the following motion if I can.
It's temporary I'm sorry can I make that come sorry the Amanda didn't construction and like lawn mowing like lawn mowing is something that happens like week after week after week after week after week but same with leaf blowing same with a business I think construction unless you're the alts it's not happening for.
Because more than there's still a decimal reader opportunity.
Right, you just said decimal readers aren't valid.
Off of cell phone apps.
But you just said.
There's so much. Professional ones that you can have that are and so if they're in violation at seven A M then yeah okay they should be shut down have to close doors but if they got seven A M they're working out with the door open there's no music they should be allowed to work.
I don't think.
We're gonna stop that either.
I think we're I think we've talked about it I think you've made your points and.
But it's it's conversational.
Okay.
I I think we I think we sort of explored this this idea so um I would like propose that um a motion to grant conditional use approval to operate a home-based personal training and small group fitness instruction facility subject to the following additional condition one all exterior doors to the area of premise shall being used for the proposed home occupation shall remain closed while in-person sessions are occurring until eight A M and would someone care to make that move? Jen Sarris has made that motion is there a second?
Second.
John Arnold seconded so let's go around and uh roll call um Isaiah if if you want seven you say no to this you vote no if you want eight you vote yes.
Then no.
Okay, you're okay here's your.
I'll take.
Somebody take okay Isaiah is is no Jen?
Yes.
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 Jamie yes. Deb?
Yes.
John? Amanda no Nancy yes so the vote was four to two five to two that add up to seven so uh this as we just as I just read is the proposed approval for the home bus home-based personal training and small group instruction facility um being approved with um closed doors until eight o'clock and um that is passing five to seven to two.
Got clarifying question because I think there's multiple on this for I'll share the so this is for all doors so not even a side door to get some airflow.
All crystallized servers.
All.
And it yeah I I can't do so.
Without reference.
No reference to any all the words I mean.
Thank you for question.
That will conclude tonight's hearing I appreciate everyone's patience.
We have to say what time they close the doors.
Me.
At at in the evening.
I guess we shouldn't.
Exactly said nine. Someone said nine.
That's fine.
Your garage door purchase you to go somewhere.
I like.
Thank you for all's appreciate thank you.
Yeah, it's while you're having class.
While it's a living it's while you're having class.
I was gonna say like what if I I do it for the safety of the oh my god right but at this current time I don't have one and I only need to do I have the windows or the doors open during very few months out of the year and I guess I would forego receiving payment from these ladies who are here to support me if I could have safe and effective classes in my garage and open my garage door of course that survive at seven A M according to the noise ordinance you see what I'm saying?
Do you want to appeal the decision?
Certainly gotta consider.
And again the noise we're just leaked yeah and they said it was seven eight for leaf blowers and everything. My it is.
There are obviously if you're right so attorney I'll intend to advise you also but at this time we are hearing because we still unfortunately have a lot of our other you know.
Thank you Pastor.
Right, you're so.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go. Will you schedule programming?
Okay.
Thank you both for the round.
Are you gonna speak? We haven't even started yet.
Alright, so now we can proceed with normal services um and our first matter of business is comments from the public your turn.
Alright, I'm coming in. I just am always curious in this.
It's actually it doesn't matter that's why it's the most.
Alright, so I am here because.
Name and address again for.
Melanie M L O N Y.
This one.
TV one on TV.
That's that.
The lady that go with.
The court reporter and now we're back to our um person that takes our minutes. Uh best one.
With the dog of son.
So I'm looking at her. Okay. Melanie Mostel M E L O N Y M O S T E L forty-three Morris Street. I'm here about the dog park.
So you can talk to us.
Oh, no. Um you know it's in I park dog park wherever as of last year gonna be a dog park we had several people on the block there you were gonna pick two people for to be on the committee we've never had one call one anything about anyone yes about us being involved and all working together on how it was gonna work what we were gonna have you don't recall any of this.
I recall us taking at least eight recommended changes from the residents who were present and putting into the plans and.
I recall us taking at least eight recommended changes from the residents who were present and putting into the plans and putting up our bid.
They asked, and and there were volunteers saying, and Karen was one, but you said you would be in touch. None of us have ever gotten anything, I ran into Amanda in May in Giant Eagle. And asked her how it was going, and she said it's not forbids. And um.
We've already every change.
They're probably gonna start in the fall again. Heard nothing, three people called and said it was on the news, that's how we heard about it, that dog park's gonna start. Last Thursday, opened the door to our backyard and they're taking stuff down, it's like, well. Neighbors called like, how come nobody ever notified, I lose the people on the thing, I have no idea, never heard from anybody.
We took every recommendation that the crowd gave us from fencing removal to new fencing to hot fencing incorporated in plans. And we held three special meetings just for Chateau Beach just alone itself.
When were they?
And took. You were here.
Well, since those meetings.
We took the drawings and made the final design and said.
He still, I just saw the drawings, the drawings you gave the guy doing it, still have the wrong people owners names on it, I gave you all of that.
We can't, we, we take them now in formers based on what we get from the county deed of reporters offices, that's not under control. But again, they have.
But again, you did not um take into consideration everything, because.
We did, we're actually having a fest, we're taking out the drug fest, like garbage fest.
We took out both fences, you said we don't need both that are there right now. There was gonna be one, and then another, with, you're gonna have another one, and then your buffer and whatever.
Yes.
Not from what I'm seeing, I have questions, because it's hysterical how, like Jennifer was talking about it, dog barking and making noise. Do you know how many dogs are gonna be barking if we hear the noise, our garage is eight foot, we have eight foot from our end of our garage. To where supposedly the line is. Now, this ten-foot buffer with trees, shrubs, whatever, it sounds pretty.
And that, no sound fence, yeah, our fence, because we actually.
Eight foot, we're, we were talking about ten foot, but not sure it's eight.
You asked us to block the line. And you actually. Yes, and you actually asked us to block the line for Brent, I think we could, and we're gonna try.
Well, yeah, so far, all that's there is open trucks.
They just started, they just started, they're gonna do site work for it.
For whatever. No, 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 I'm talking with Brent.
Yeah.
The newest thing because of you having this now is all the trucks line up with the box open. Yeah, they're carrying all kinds of stuff, which again, we're not, I don't know what it is, they put new tanks in, we're not, I don't know what it is. I mean, I don't get it, we're not allowed and we're not being a part of any of this.
You were a part of it.
No, we're not.
Yes, Melanie, you were a part when you were participating and some of your other colleagues.
I've thought since then, like if I need different people back.
But was something, was nothing for you to do if we were in a holding pattern while we got all our bids together, made a decision on what company to go with.
Right, you made the decision, you didn't have any of us.
You, it's not your job to make the decision about who we bid to.
Involved. Not who you bid to, about how it's going, like.
What do you want us to do, Melanie?
I wanted you to be transparent, which is a big word.
What do you want us to do now?
I wanna know, I wanna see the plans, I wanna see what to do, and I wanna know. The eight foot that we have behind our garage where the green post thing is. Um, that's supposedly the line, but because of trees. They can't make it straight, because that's something they're gonna talk to you about too, because there are some trees that either need to be topped, they said. Or cleaned up on the sides, because the ones like down on your shed, where the original fence was. It was more on your side, sort of on both, the one is really a problem. The other one that they did take out had vines that went up. And were choking a couple of the other trees, which they said needs addressed also.
Am I mistaken?
But my thing is our, is the ten feet.
Oh, yeah.
We have. Am I mistaken, are the plans publicly available?
Yes.
They are.
Instruction this, yes.
The the plans are publicly available, I have, I essentially post dog park.
I know you did, but you wanted to.
But what you said. May I please, Jennifer?
Good way, I have.
Although.
Wait, wait, we have gone way outside of our bounds here. The public comment, you speak, we list, and so finish what you have to say, and then we can make.
Well, I am, I'm trying to address certain things.
Okay, so, so you.
We did it in three minutes, so busy.
So, yeah, yeah, we.
So you are well beyond.
Well beyond, so in if, can you in the next minute.
Yeah, well, everybody else talking too.
Yeah, I know, and you can interrupt, so.
So I'll be charged.
So here, so why don't you, in the next minute, give us what your major concerns you have.
Okay, so, the eight foot, am I correct, can saying there's eight foot before this property line?
Doing my eight-foot setback.
Well, from where our.
Or eight-foot height, would you be doing it this way or this way?
No. No, I'm talking our garage here. We have eight foot supposedly to where the fence was, which is our property, the other side of that was yours. So, this ten-foot buffer, is it after the eight foot of our, where the green hose is gonna be? And the fence is on the other side of that, so if you're maintaining that, I mean, to me, we were gonna have. A fence in our backyard, and everything else was on the other side of the fence for the dog park, now that's not the case, now supposedly. We have this eight foot, then they're gonna put a buffer, then the fence to the dog park, I don't know that there's a sound barrier anymore, like all the things we were told.
Really?
It should happen, I don't know, so I'm asking.
You're well beyond the three minutes tonight, if possible, would you be willing to just submit a list of your concerns? For council to review in advance of tonight's meetings?
I'd be willing for somebody to come down and look and take a look at it with me.
And it, I'm gonna read this.
Well.
I mean, you have everything.
And we incorporated everything.
Right, I think it's.
No, you didn't.
I think it's a matter, I mean, to try to do this in the abstract's very difficult, to be sure we know what you're saying. So if, as Jake said, if you can make a list of your major questions, then Scott can sit and. Or someone from the office can come with you and stand on your property and answer those questions. And you have, we have drawings, you can see the drawings, we have not tried to make this secret or, I mean, this has been, all of the things been talked about in these public meetings. There's been no backroom discussions that were changing things um from what you understood.
We already has, we had Chateau Beach team just for this.
Right, I mean, so I know you're feeling stressed a bit about this, but.
I I guess I am, because, I mean, from what me and the other neighbors said. We thought we were gonna be contacted, as it went along.
Okay, well.
Nobody ever got a phone call, knock on a door, anything.
Yeah, there's nothing that has changed since the last time you came to the meeting, since then, all it's been is engineering work to get everything right, get the whole design down based on what we discussed. Then go out the bid, then review the bid, then you know, lined up the work.
I'll make a list, I'm like, did somebody come down, these two property?
Alright.
Because honestly, the last meeting that I was at, I believe, is where you.
Oh.
Said this should be, because we weren't informed, it was shook.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Melanie.
So you didn't do it, I said, I'm sorry, but you didn't.
Yes, my name's Gus, I'm sitting here on council for John Key, but I don't know, I'm a little premature here. You know, I came for the brief review on the uh HOP and the turnback. Um, is that something that we could, I could hear a briefing on and then make comments?
The turnback agreement for Adeline Roundway, I assume you're referring to, uh, that is still with PennDOTs.
Yeah.
But essentially, uh, both, nothing has been finalized yet, the ball is in PennDOTs for, council has some questions regarding certain language. I think now is the formal file agreement that's off inside, I don't have an update provided on that at this time. I've been waiting for an update for almost two months now for that.
And when you get it, would you be able to give me a call?
I think I know when it's going to get.
Because, you know, my client's going to oppose it, he's gonna bring suit to stop it, uh, he believes he has a fee simple interest in that property. He wants everyone to make that known, and we just don't wanna be surprised that.
Justin, I promise you, I know your client's position, I know your position, we're keeping everything above the book on this one, whenever there's an update to provide, I'll personally contact you.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Okay, um.
We found one of these, I really have one of them.
Okay. Um, we don't have any correspondence, or we do?
We incorporated actually as as part of the condition you started, only part one.
Alright, council minutes, um, we, uh, minutes from the July fifteenth meeting. Um, I did have a couple um. Changes, and I don't think anyone else did, um, but if you have it in front of me. My line number two thirteen. Is uh to change this, right now it reads um future maintenance costs, keep ARV as an all brick roadway. And I would like us to change that, um, that the discussion was to keep ARV as A. Uh, A in friends, um, all brick roadway, or B, brick and concrete roadway. Just to clarify, because that's where our discussion was at that point, and then going down to the next paragraph, lines two eighteen to two twenty-two. Um, this has to do with the sidewalk repairs that are done following certain tree removals, and I wanna make sure that this doesn't get misunderstood when somebody reads the minutes. We have, uh, Mr. Fody briefed OVC regarding trees damaging sidewalks and utilities. And then, the borough has means to repair sidewalks that, and this would be the insert. Or something, you can come up with maybe better language a little bit, but the insert would be that are damaged when a tree is removed, which is interfering. With the utilities to the homeowner's house, so that would be a period. So that would be electric, electrical, uh, what I don't know what all.
Water utility or gas utility.
So right now, if, as we said, if the tree's growing on it, it has to be removed, in removing the trunk and everything. We break open the the sidewalk in order to get at those utilities, then we are at the moment. Doing repairs of sidewalks in that situation. We are not just repairing sidewalks if we remove a tree, and I just wanna be sure that that is clear in the minutes.
I'll do that, sorry.
Okay, um, and the last sentence says residents are still responsible for repairing their sidewalks. Um, but that's, those are my only two changes, and then. Does anybody else have any other changes they wanted to make about this? No, unless too many, um, then uh. I would like the motion to accept those minutes as corrected. Would anyone like to make that motion?
We need more.
Second.
Okay, John Arnold made the motion, and Jen Paris seconded that um we approve the July fifteenth regular meeting minutes as corrected. Okay, the second minutes are the work session from August fifth. And.
Excuse me.
Yes.
We did not put.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, I was about to say that.
Oh, the change, the change, yes.
Yes, um, all those are there.
I.
All those opposed, alright. It's a good thing somebody's paying attention over there, um, okay, what about the minutes from August fifth, did anybody have any changes? No? Okay, if there are no changes, changes in those are approved as written. Okay, moving on, on borough manager?
Yes, in your packet, you have a copy of the Boulevard Project meeting minutes, they're just there for information only, we're, we can talk more about September work session, about the progress on the LED streetlight. Discussions as well as the handoff progress in that installation. Um, and actually, I am receiving counsel from the US to reject a bid, a sole bid for a solar improvement project in the Dark Hollow Woods. Yes?
Why are we rejecting the bid?
Because it was a sole bid that was came in, and it came in over five hundred percent of our budget.
Okay.
I'm making that up, no, yes, it was a thirty thousand dollar project, we received a grant for thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, I I seem reasonable.
Um, there was, there was, it's a, it's a bid that's controlled by the Allegheny, you make the motion, I can talk about it.
Some move.
Second.
Got it.
Okay, uh, in the, in the.
Deb or me moved, and I see the second.
Sorry, we're getting a little loosey goosey here. The bid was advertised to the Allegheny Valley North Council, government's mechanism to advertise, and they had two plant holders, one did not submit a bid. The one who did submit a bid, it came in at three hundred thousand dollars, which was okay, about two and a half times what let us have thought it would be. So the, right, the motion funders that you were discussing is to reject the visit, and operate them to re-advertise. In that re-advertising, let us have sold, we can reach out to their avenue of mechanism, they mechanized way to get things unstuck to contractors, hopefully get more plant holders in.
And in general, we don't accept.
Typically, we don't accept.
Unless it comes in right where you think it should.
Okay.
Um, so this is not uncommon, it just hasn't happened to us that much since. Okay, um, so we've made this motion, and it's been seconded, is there any other discussion? No, um, all those in favor? All those opposed, okay, that passed unanimously.
Um, library board, some updates wanted to give you, I'm gonna remind council that if you're having a council focus group with the planning consultants for the library at six o'clock. On September second, it can be revoked in, we already have a link for it, if you know, you're gonna have challenges being here. This does come before the work session, which starts at seven. Um, at that same, in that same rhythm I'm giving you, there will be a community town hall on September seventeenth with the library assessment group. Uh, libraries start advertising it soon, but we're gonna put it out here first, so you can, the focus group, the consultants talking to us as policymakers and leaders of the, of the government body. But then you may certainly go in and at the seventeenth and speak as citizen of Oakland. Uh, again, the libraries can start advertising that, and we'll share in making that announcement as well, so.
So, Vanya, the, the first is council, essentially council meeting?
Yes. Counsel, yes.
September second and September seventeen is. Okay. Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay.
So, real quickly, some announcements since we last met, the August work session. The foundation parking lot is moving into the next phase of work, which is improvements along Allegheny Avenue, Nancy and I signed off on the highway oxygen permit. That they can submit to PennDOT, because this is all the work that's inside the state right away, it is mostly for enhancements, new concrete, brickwork, working on those alignments.
And just, I I asked what this was too, was it's. Now there's openings that go out onto Delaware that are new, that we had, they had to get approval for, and then they're closing the two openings that existed. They go out onto Allegheny Avenue, and those have to be also to change, then we have to, they had to get approval. And I don't know why they waited till now to request that, but they did.
I just have a quick question. My hammer is.
Listening.
Oh, do they still plan to install any lighting, or what could charge us?
Lighting, definitely, you see the light stands are there, they just haven't done it. I don't recall seeing the EV station, but if they pre-marred these, the EV charge gears, just haven't put them in.
But that's still part.
It was still part of it, but I had to actually look at it.
Yeah, I do.
Um, but we talked about Chateau Beach, they just barely started, they just literally mobilized on the property.
Can I make a comment on Chateau Beach?
Sure.
We, we, we. May I make a comment?
I just didn't know for a joint.
John, we. As soon as I'm not interrupted, I know. Oh, we, I think, e- even though I didn't like some of the original stuff, we were very transparent. Okay, we have had multiple meetings. At which the residents in that area were notified and free to attend. Once they planned. Once the plans have been approved and made public as they are, I don't see any point in further discussion about it. We had approved plans, everyone has had an opportunity to see them. Everyone had an opportunity to object publicly. And this continuous you can't make it a continuous process, once you have an approved project with approved plans, there's not gonna be any deviation.
I, I have just thought on that, kind of a comparison that's not direct, but it is a comparison. That the water work that has been done in the Commons has been going on for years, and it's all been public and everybody knows, but we still felt the need to go have a meeting and present and talk about it, and it's similar to this, is that the neighbors that are directly affected often feel powerless. And even if we've given them experience, from my opinion, I think we we continue to give them a chance to comment and just keep them up to date, because they're ten feet away. And
The other thing, though, is like, I went down there and specifically spoke to her and asked questions, and we relayed all that to her.
I know.
And when she ran into me, there was a flea market on the avenue. And all I said was yeah, it was. But I forgot, I immediately texted Scott, and was just like, is there anything else that I'm missing that, like, we put out to bid, we're waiting on bids at this point, like, is there something else that I'm missing?
This, I, this is a matter of, this is a matter of explaining the construction plans, and I assured her, was we incorporated all their conceptual ideas about the fencing and barriers and buffers, I just have to be able to show the construction plans there, there.
And it, it can take a fifteen or twenty minutes of our time, maybe make her feel less angry, less opposed, less likely to be out in the public telling people that we were unfair to her, even though we know we did everything we could to bring the community in to that decision. I, that's why I offered that, is, that's why I
Let me just make a comment on that. When we went into our Commons, that was more or less a council PR thing. There was no objection by anyone in the Commons to the plans.
He's right.
Wasn't that, wasn't that meeting where everybody in the Commons sat like this?
Yeah.
No.
What really is that?
No one in the Commons, that was a meeting where we sat, we presented the plans, which they were aware of ahead of time, and for which there were no objections whatsoever.
That's been
I agree.
That would be
I'm, I'm, I wish.
There was
Then, then we watched around
Yeah, what I was going to say, that was a better view of the kind of work
And that was for us.
Yes.
I, I would equate the fact that we had a special meeting about a major construction project in the Commons, isolated, just that was the agenda topic. In a special meeting for just Chateau Beach here, just, and those residents that were affected were directly involved with it. That's the parallel.
And, and I think, I think Nancy is right in that they want to know that they've been heard, maybe not necessarily agreed with, but they need to know that they've been heard.
And they were
But, but how did we
I know, I know.
That's right, so that's, let's move on then.
Yeah.
John had sent, submitted email about talking about crosswalk and curb markings and a brief overview. The street department utilizes the goals, the study was done by the I just know it's Paul Meyer's daughter, she went for a gold, gold star with the Girl Scouts and did an assessment at every intersection of the borough. Rating it only for the lack of, or the presence of ADA ramps, but also the type of crossing walk, crosswalks we do. When we brought line painting back into the borough's offices, Josh and the crew, and Mike and the crew, used that plan that she developed to create a systematic approach to the, to the crossings. We cannot do every crossing every year in a row, but we do, we do the commuting maybe in quarters or fifths the best we can. I can tell you the biggest challenge with crosswalks is on brick, latex, we use latex paint for most of all, if not all of our crossings. Latex paint does not stick to brick regardless of the age, because it's not porous like asphalt. We are looking at a poly material, I would be killed if I can't remember the name of it, but it's a poly, it's not, it's not paint, it's plastic. That sticks to brick, however, it is about two and a half times the cost of latex. So we're consolidating to get done with latex paint we can, and then we're gonna do the special paint for where we can. Now, I know specifically as much about Washington Street, almost every, if it's the crossings within the road program, those will be incorporated when the road program completes it. They can address the other crossings, they're an asshole, when it comes to the brick, nothing is going to stick. Conversely, if you recall, we got a web form, we did get a web form about the crossings around Archie Street and Third Street, again, it's all brick. We're gonna paint it, but we know it's not gonna last.
But school is getting redone.
School did their own. School does their own, we were actually telling the small school for one win curb, which is that little governor driving the front. Harold's on private property technically, but we, I'm sorry, no, no, we did test drive, right? That was for, that was
I think the comment you got, or at least mine, was about fifty. And they are fated, but I think, you know, rather than doing every crosswalk, I, I think we should concentrate on those that have, that are crossing most dangerous streets.
The more intense, well, we start, actually, we start the most intense crossing in markets you're gonna see on Allegheny River Boulevard, and they slowly diminish the further you go up, so we're doing more what's called the piano keys, because you can line them up, so they all run as fast. But when, I mean hypothetically, Twelfth and Pennsylvania, if there's cross sidewalks there, we're just gonna do the bars. But if they feel, they have the, I'm sure we do piano keys, but there's always a systematic approach. We put about ten thousand dollars in budget for painting supplies like that.
But, but where
We do.
Where, where it's most dangerous.
No, no, the more intense, we do work on, we work, we started the tennis school, worked our way up, we started Allegheny River, Allegheny Avenue, worked our way out. Definitely. Okay? I don't have an update for the road program, we know Foligno's starting to mobilize in the territory, as we recall during our pre-construction meeting. They are also a contractor for our Penda, and that's the project that goes from Penn Hills all the way to Holton Road on Allegheny River Boulevard, as well as Hol Road all the way to Logan's Ferry Road in Plum Borough, which is Costco Hill. And they have a lot of stormwater work, like Penn, we were delayed because of the US Open. So normally, we typically get our pro projects done right after schools open, schools close, we couldn't because US Open was next week.
Is there, what on Washington Avenue, against?
That's our main source.
I don't, it, it's getting to be like slow, of course.
But I drove the last week, I agree, and I, I always say patience, 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 I drove like, okay, this is rough, I'm gonna struggle with problems.
I
Oh, we know it's coming.
I think, I think residents would feel a little better about it if we could, even if it's not the correct day, if we could give a a date.
We can't give a date till we know that they can actually mobilize, when we do, we'll, we'll They were told this late August, that's the best they could come up with at our meeting, in the last week's life.
I can't relay a date until we know, say.
No. We can try, but we'll figure it out, I can ask them, show them that, reach out to them and say, have a better date now.
Yeah, because if we could just say, you know, say, sorry, it won't be gone, yeah, I mean, sorry, it is, but it will be gone, or we'll start on a certain date.
But what if they don't, and I said they did?
Like I said, it doesn't have to be a good
Well, unlike, that's not, that's not, because that goes back to the, the Fode doesn't put that information out there, he can't pack.
Yeah.
And yeah, I did very personally, I know that. I'm just saying, when I have a firm date, I have sound information, we will provide that to the public. If it may not be a great date, I may hold my nose when I say it, but at least it's a firm date.
Yeah.
And I, I totally, it'll be done this construction season, and they're, they have a deadline, and I think they have a hundred, they had like ninety days from when we did the proceed. The, um, notice to proceed, which was signed that day.
Yeah, that'll be
Maybe we have to put a sign dangerous.
Yeah, I put down A Street enhancements, and I don't have a chance to talk to Mike Huber, the guy, I know they were putting up newer signs and cleaning up the signs. And ultimately, you're gonna buy some flashing beacons. We looked at, we looked at roadway enhancements would be like a thicker lime striking paint.
Yeah.
But then you would be hearing rumble strips when people go over them. So we thought that's probably not what we wanted to do, so we're gonna go for better signage, better enhanced signage. They started, and then winter camps, we have to get them back on track, but they were waiting to get the beacons.
Beacons, okay, well, it's not just the, the stop sign beacons, it's the, the line of sight issue with the people crashing into the cars that are parked on the side.
Street parking, I can't.
Okay.
You can, we can
Campaign parking line.
We need
Paint a, paint a line where parking goes, and then if we're riding up, we'll see
Park on the other side of that street anyway?
You can park on both sides of the street.
So, I mean, by the time you paint those lines, it's like a one lane highway.
You know what I mean, it's a tight road. Any lines?
The uphill coming from Holton. The other way, you're going down, you can see what you're gonna hit. But anyway, that's right.
Right, I'm considering it.
Yep. It's coming, right in front of
Dear survey.
As of right now, we have five hundred and thirty responses.
Wow.
Wow.
So, I, my notes that you wanted it to end September seventh?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I can take it all and put it into a slides presentation and submit it for the packet, and then we can
Great.
We'll do one more last, if you have an answer to the survey, do you have until September seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it, like, for the record, is, out of five hundred and thirty responses, five hundred and twenty-seven are Oakmont residents, so three other people. It's mostly Oakmont, so
Yeah, but can you share just a little officer's document to hear?
I see, I see them all now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's some of the questions
Um, so, things like, do you believe the number of deer has, has increased, can you rate if it's a problem on a scale of one to ten, ten being a severe problem? Questions about if they've ever been in an accident, if they feel like it's impacting their health. Uh, damage to landscaping, and the extensively of that. Um, some have shared what they've used as
Their parents.
Really great effective sprays, so we have that list.
No.
Um, quite a few people would like information on what plants are the best plants to plant in the area that are deer resistant. A lot of, about half of the responses have no idea that we have ordinance preventing feeding, so we can do, you know, another social media post specifically about that, and then it, it's a little bit all over responses for what they think mixed ups would be, and I think if I summarize that, it would do a disservice to the data, so we can actually look at the bar graphs later.
That's great. Alright. I think on the, the deer feeding Jacob, um problem is the magistrate will enforce that. We, we had a case where we, we had photographic evidence written records of the people being bored, etc. But we still no match sheet by the magistrate, but he got to them.
And that's, we have discussed that, it's not a known problem of the perspective, and we talked about it in numerous contexts where it's difficult to try to force magistrate to rule a certain way, the way the ordinance is typically written is you can impose fine and a prison sentence up to, in my seeming a certain amount. One thing that I could suggest that might be a possible solution to that would be to amend the ordinances to say, you know, impose a fine of no less than five hundred and, you know, no more than one thousand. The practical implication prob, the magistrate probably still will disregard it and throw out or impose non-fine, but at least possibly for a little more teeth to our ordinances. It's something I'd have to look into that to confirm the legality.
Why don't you do?
Please do, because I'm with the magistrate's here. I'm with the magistrate. Express, you know.
I was about to say, I could, maybe
I, I, I understand our code officers obligated to go, but I'll go as speak as a witness, say, Your Honor, I'm former code officer. I'm not getting my job done, and the people are complaining, or yelling at me, they vote too. I've used that line before.
And it's actually dangerous for the animals.
It is. Okay, under administration, there's some action items, the first is Resolution Number Six, which is the last, you know, right, having the borough take a step, become recognized as a part of the Birdtown program.
I'm motion to adopt the Resolution Six.
That's Amanda's motion, and Isaiah seconded.
Any discussion on this?
I, I just want to be clear, there's no cost to the borough.
It's just a title.
Yes.
Is it?
Well, there's program, but there's a title.
Yeah, I think there's a, yeah.
Well, there's a
Put a sign in or something, yeah.
And Jamie, you had
Yeah.
Showed interest in this.
I'll help you with that, I got my bill.
Any other discussion on this? Uh, no discussion, they'll take a vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh, me too, is the school district asking for their angle light at the park through night fall sports event using lights in Riverside Park.
Yep, we had a motion, so
That was With them, Tennessee, how's that? Any second?
I'll second.
Ms. Orme has made the motion, Ms. Barris has made, has seconded, any discussion?
Get this real quick.
Yeah.
Bill was good, is currently done and will be done before the state, right?
We were, we're still in a position that they'll be ready to register in the light estimate.
You were asking if the field service was ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, they
Its roots are taken, the grass, the reggermination of others, this is three areas are probably laid, the parking are coming back again, and we got hit with a fungicide like everybody else did, that's what the brown was from. So, and I heard anecdotal story that the country club's having the worst problems writing their grass to grow too, so it just wasn't limited to Riverside Park. June was not, June is not a friendly to landscaping.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the light up for the park, and any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, also.
E three's importance, as they all are, the, we're entering a new, new year contract with the South Hills Purchasing Alliance for our annual rock salt purchase.
Here, yeah, let's do the motion and then discuss, is there a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five Shay, Shay Cog joint part, joint rock salt bid from Compass Minerals America, Inc. in the amount of eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents per ton? And so moved, John Arnold moved?
I'll second.
Good, and Jen sec, Jamie seconded. Okay, so go ahead and figure your back.
With this question, the last contract, the, it's a seventy-five cent per ton increase is what it is over the last contract, that was a three-year contract with Card Gill. I still believe it's still through Card Gill, but the supplier is gonna be this entity, this entity called Compass Minerals America. In the coming months, we'll have a meeting with them about how to schedule our, make our orders, and be known.
Probably had a ton of excess before.
We did, so we still, we still do a minimum purchase amount. Our bid is full, it's been filled the last two years to be on by our minimum, which I believe is, it's either sixty or eighty percent of our ask. So we go to a hundred forty percent over just in case, but we already have fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred ton in the barn. So even at, our, we request a thousand rest for, you know, between sixty and eight hundred ton, we do always make our minimum.
She, um, they, they have solely store access.
No. No, that's why there's a minimum, that's what usually happens, not this past winter, but two winters ago when it never snowed, sixty-seven thousand in this contract said, we have no room, and Card Gill supplier, we actually, the barn, the, our supply side comes from, a war from the Monaga Hell River. Others in the North Hills, which they go, I get there from Cleveland. All, all the Card Gill agreed to hold on to the salt for another year, but, but the Cavill's, we had to make orders by Thanksgiving the following year.
So, so is Card Gill's whole leak the excess?
Card Gill helped, the, the, at that time, Card Gill helped the excess for everybody who had no room for it, or they're in charge of saying fifteen dollars per ton rental fee to hold the salt, so we hurried up and prayed for early winter and happened. Um, any more discussion, folks?
Is this the same pricing I'm looking at?
Seventy-five cents from last year, it was eighty, it was eighty-seven, fifty-seven per ton last year, so it's a point eight six percent increase.
That's amazing.
It's amazing, yeah, Card Gill didn't miss it by much directly, so there's just, you know, one, it's like asshole, oops.
Um, any other discussion, questions? I know, we lost. We'll let her vote when she gets back. All is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll count hers in when she gets here. Okay. But collective party, I think.
In your packet is the, what we call the tentative approval, which the union voted on. Uh, I gotta find it, oh, I said that's a separate email. I may need to reference that. Um, all the, in the memo I gave, there's a separate handout before the packet. I showed you what the existing language was before the contract and what it says now. Um, it does show it's a four year agreement, uh, no more than three percent except for year four, it goes up to three and a half percent, which was the last. Uh, part of the agreement we came to, I came to separately, I pulled you through an email. Um, it does standardize some of the language. That did not exist before and some of the, some of the language was tweaked by the, at the request of Teamsters normally, or specifically the R two. The employee denied every part of the union to be protected by the union, the team should ask us to change that language, which is calculated based on the Teamsters agreement. Again, I just talked about the length of the contract, they do run a fiscal contract, they run a calendar, so we'll. June thirty, July first are always the anniversary dates. As opposed to December third, first and January first. Um. We stipulated, the street department had different times of, time starting of their shift based on daylight savings time, we had traditionally said. Memorial Day to Labor Day, but unfortunately those days shift and sometimes doesn't work, so it's daylight savings time, because that's when really the package there were. The argument being, it's so dark when you got to work really, really early and weren't doing anything, so we follow daylight savings, the light doesn't change. Um. Also, if they were stipulating the contract, when to take lunch, it stipulated that they must take lunch, so we stipulate you must take lunch. You cannot use it to leave work early. So at some point in your time during their eight hour day, if you're in the middle of something. We're not gonna, we're gonna get this project done, then take a halftime lunch, you just can't leave a half hour early because you didn't take lunch. That was a stipulation. We did add Juneteenth to their contracts, like we did with our handbook. Um, seniority. Was based on recall rights, essentially was, you know, something for like happens about layoffs in periods of, well, we're not looking to do that. But there was always a recall provision that was very vague, so we just extended it by another year. Based on seniority for recall, but again, that's something we never, have ever experienced. But no stuff. Management rights, um, it was very broad. We came back to agree that we're gonna stipulate some things, the street department was very eager to bring more work in-house, line painting, some other repair stormwater cleanouts. So stipulation is that, you know, we look at each project specifically and say whether or not we're gonna do it in-house or not. We've been doing it in practice for the last two years already, so we just said we'd sit pretty right in from the contract.
Did we clarify this supervision problem?
The lead, uh, part of the, the lead is, the, the, the position of foreman has been removed from the contract, but the provision of lead has been retained. At the conclusion that when this contract is ratified, a memo is gonna come from illustration of council's blessing, identify the leads of both the street department as well as the sewer plant. Okay? Um, suspension discharge. We, you know, all employees, public, the public sector, regardless of union or not, you're gonna get what's called a louder mill hearing. That's your hearing, and she said, why, why, tell us why we're gonna fire you. What we're asked, what they have asked to re-agree upon is a sit down meeting within seventy two hours of us finding a violation. So we can sit down and say, okay, look, we're gonna pursue a louder hearing unless we hear something different that this will get together. Uh, we call it become the Jesus meeting, um, but the, the louder ability, the louder of no hearing essentially, we can tell you, you, you're gonna be terminated. And to agree with the foundation. We agreed having ascended to our meetings for him. With for law of my parent. Agreement pay, uh, changing with the time, you still get three days like we had before. That's what we said, they did not be consecutive and you have to use it within a year, what we're seeing a lot now is. Um. As we've seen in practice, they've had a day of viewing, but they've done more of maybe six months later.
Yeah.
So that's what we're doing, we're, we're just checking, adjusting to the times. Again, the quantity of base has not changed. Um. Health and welfare, it was right into the Teamsters part, their, they, they, the company, the entity they use for Teamsters healthcare changed names. Same people, just incorporated differently, it is specifically called the Wisconsin Pennsylvania Teamsters and Motor Care and Welfare Employment Fund. That's their, that's our healthcare benefit, they changed it, we didn't. Uh, temporary, temporary uniforms, we identified, um. Stipulated what the wage rate is for temporary employee. Uh, we did it with uh, Robert Dennison, he came on board, you know, we stipulated his, what you're gonna pay was, it was not there, the writing was put in writing now. And also that, you know, based on the lack of professional uniform companies. Meeting the needs of the street department, we came to high reflectivity and identification, names and logos. We worked out a agreement with a broader by the heart in Oakmont, and we've come up with an entire package of uniforms. Some are bought annually, some are bought semiannually, some are bought biannually. And we've, we've come out with an agreement what the uniform would look like for them to wear. And they agreed they would buy, they buy the pants on their own, maintain, they maintain all the clothes on their own.
That is prior. We held up the whole process of discussion.
Yes.
So that's good, we moved into actually.
And lastly, uh, the agreement of both parties, we made our package gender inclusive. Or gender independent, if you personally, now you're, if I said it incorrectly, sorry. I didn't look at your eyes, I was looking at that gentleman, he's like, turn, turn around. So, um, again, they voted for it, um. As written, uh, the council's next step is to vote on it as written. We'll let the teams know, we'll file a document for the president council to sign off as well as the union leadership. They are owed some retroactive pay based on this, we're gonna go ahead and do that once upon ratified the next payroll. Also, one of the things I don't think we've mentioned here is part of the pay is. Uh, the training incentive for the road department, there's always a training incentive for the street department sewer plant, they get a dollar fifty bump automatically because of their. Certification of DDP. Through a combination of, of certification through Pennsylvania one call and certifications through either Robcat or Catatmo for operations of equipment. They too can obtain, the street department also obtain a dollar fifty bump. And they're paid for certifications and maintaining certification. Again, a professionalized department, I'll talk about something later, why it's important to get a Pennsylvania one call certification. Um, council's action will be to vote to, to motion to ratify this project. And then we'll move forward. Is Jamie, is Jamie, is James listening?
Ah, she.
That's fine, okay.
If there could also, did you, um, did you go yes to the shade part of?
Okay.
Yes. So, so, yeah, we can say it was unanimous seven zero on the B three motion.
Okay.
All right, um. Do, does anybody have any questions about the, um, collective bargaining agreement or? Need any additional information?
Just one, are we supposed to, you know, wait after twelve months, there, um. Uh, any disciplinary actions or?
We didn't change that. We didn't make any changes to the proposals about disciplinary and made the changes to their, the, the amount of they contributing to the premium for the monthly healthcare. And we did not change our request of having an increase of contributions eventually.
So that, that is now standing that after twelve months, it's erased?
It, it's, they're, they wanted, uh. We didn't make the change that they asked for, whatever is written on there, yes.
So there's a longer.
Yes.
Continuation, okay. Any other questions?
But standard? Like, you can.
Per discipline?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll speak clearly as a non-union member, they always try to get that part remise, erased, that you come back with a clean slate. Um. I've never seen. Typically, typically, members of the union sort of say, this guy's not gonna, this guy's not gonna make it. And they don't, they don't fight the disciplinary action or the. Use gender specifically, essentially, it's a disciplinary action where, you know, maybe the employer's in the wrong. Type of deal, or procedurally did something wrong.
And a really question? Um. I don't think we made this motion. Okay, um, would anyone care to make the motion to. Uh, ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the general Teamsters chauffeurs and helpers, local unit two forty nine. Representing the Oakmont Street Department and wastewater treatment plant employees in Oakmont Borough for a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty eight. So. Jamie moved, is there a second?
We'll second.
John Arnold seconded.
I have one more question, we'll see you upon desk office, uh, uh, spreadsheets, but that right where I can pay, it's like, you know, everything. Uh, tomorrow, unless there's any time to write it here.
How, and, and what parts being discovered?
July first, twenty twenty, what are you in, twenty four?
So it's not a four year?
No, it's, yeah, we're gonna four year, yeah.
How do you think, Peggy?
It's actually not that bad, it, it's, it's, I read in the numbers, if you're talking. Less than a dollar.
Okay, um. There's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that moved, um, past six to one, six, um.
Six. Um. Finance, the motion to approve the warrant list?
Oh, sorry.
I took a pause, I apologize.
I'll make the motion to approve the warrant list for July twenty twenty five in a total amount of six hundred fifty nine thousand, three hundred thirty two dollars and four cents.
Is there a second?
A second.
Deb seconds. Any discussion? If there's no questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, so that warrant list is accepted. Okay, public safety, okay, Berish report.
Uh, in your packet, uh, I have a letter of intent just to warn you. Uh, uh. Possibility that I will confirm, yeah, very ceremony next month. That I, yeah, so, uh, just to let you know, no money will be collected. And that is far of, uh, what I can do under, I'm there. And it's a, it's a couple remarried. From, from, so, um, I can buy your warrant, let me wait till now.
You build the details.
Yeah.
Well, that's the, have you ever done that before?
No, no, so I've been practicing my, uh, little sleep.
And you, you were, you were part of Thompson Bryant, that's why we have the letter.
Yes, that's why I, I was part, uh, in writing and to inform you that my lawyer collected, so that's why. Uh, I did, that, that'll cover for, because I can do as long as mayor and even as, um, if I was not re-elected, I still would continue at that. Uh, so it should be very, I'm gonna, I'll tell you when one sort of action happens. Make sure it goes through, yeah.
Good question, is, is marriage.
Yeah, then you're right, right, right.
Good, good karma, yes.
Okay, uh, Chief Board is not with us, then, we have Officer Soffrance, so give us an update on some activities that's gone on.
Uh, Police Farmer conducted another active shooter training for law enforcement at the high school. Last, week before last. We trained, I think it was eighteen officers, anywhere, anywhere from. Catup University's police chief was there, from the Keys Rocks, the, our last two guys, some of the fun officers. Uh, that was myself and Officer Stuff. I can publicly thank the high school, the, the review administration for letting us borrow the school again. And FBI Pittsburgh for letting us borrow their equipment to be there to train. I also did a. Orientation, quick slideshow for the new teachers for their active shooter response to the high school, we have all the schools in the district. And that's it for the active shooter stuff, again, thank, thank you to Doctor, just let us do all that. And then secondly, we have added uptake of these burglaries in the, in the neighborhood of town, as well as several being stolen. Almost every single car was unlocked. Nothing more ruined, it's nothing more damaged, I don't believe. And all the key, all the cars that were stolen, the keys were inside the car. Okay, I was here maybe a year ago, so the same thing, right? Uh, Fisher is gonna keep going to the fishing hole, we keep making fish. If you keep leaving your car unlocked, they're gonna keep coming back. All right, one more thing about active shooter stuff. I would like to give you all an active shooter class. Mr. Wilson has been to the cell, it was very pertinent, what you said, it's all, it's awesome. I wanna open it up to the community. Right, with the chief's approval. Right, and start teaching to everybody in our town, to stop the bleeding.
Oh, great, yeah.
That's all I got?
Oh, in school, sorry?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, school does start Thursday, there is gonna be presence around all schools, there should be at least three officers out driving around. The orange barricade is gonna be out there blocking first sweep. We're gonna need to get a fire truck to block that really deep off.
Oh, I have a question, which regarding this schools, um, I know the doctor I looked at mentioned that there would be armed private security. At the schools this year, have they shot you, if there's any communication there?
I needed, we have a meeting, we had a meeting with Marla Warren, she decided to meet, I met one of them. Friday, when I did their, their brief of active shooter stuff. Uh, I don't know that they had them completely through the hire process, but I know they were gonna pass.
What's the, yeah. What is the training criteria for what armed security, are they four, are they? What officers who are doing this? You know, as an extra thing or?
I can get into that a little bit, yeah, so it looks like they're going through a private security company, every private security company that is going to operate is. Asked to be through a certain curriculum and also be licensed to do that, that's a additional license, that's in it. A publicly security license, I believe it's the active, uh, security act, private security detectives act of nineteen fifty six. So they have to buy by that, I was taught that they also have to be, uh. Licensed to be, or, uh. Safety officer, so there's a safety officer for school officials, um, that they have to pass, um, and the, um. Company to be responsible. Making sure that there's an officer, feedback criteria kind of.
And, and how does that training criteria compare to like for police officer?
So. With that, uh, they do have, it, I, I can't give a nice sentence, um, but they do have to be state requirements. Top of the door and. Um, which at least for their, uh. You know, armed security officer, they have to hear. Uh, the rigorous class, which is about. Sixty five hours with also getting air printed with, and then the added part of the safety officer, they also have to take an additional training course to get re-certified then. Every year.
I presume they go like. You know, child, this is everything, or mandatory.
Oh, yes, that's.
Yeah. I, I guess I need to comment, or would like to comment from the police department, so. Whether they consider that. These people, these armed people are adequately trained and supervised.
Well, we're really not involved with any of the hiring of the school districts, that's across the state, uh, they don't consult with us who they hire. I mean, they're gonna meet this person.
They were, we're meeting them tomorrow morning.
Yeah, but, uh. Local police departments are not involved with the school districts that are hiring, these aren't. It's a two separate. Man. It worries me too, to have an armed officer in school.
It, it's for, yeah, yeah.
But that's across the state.
A lot of it, there's like third party to establish, as they could have established their own political police station in the house, um, but they chose to go with their partner.
That's what I think, it's like a lack of oversight, I agree with you, John, I think it's like both the lack of. Oversight, as you, it's a small community, right, I think there were lots of opportunities to work with our existing force and.
Yeah, I mean, like this very village, that's very big, that's something different, but smaller ones, I think they put it, that's a.
And just the school started, you know, on Thursday, and we still don't really know who people are, it concerns me about that, but I'm sorry about it.
Is this the first time our school district has had security, oh my heavens?
It has, this is for everybody, this, this is state requirement.
Oh, is it, my, my state requirement is not that they're armed, that they must have bars, that the guards do not have to be armed, so it's, we opted in to the arming.
Oh, they have a choice.
Yeah, they can also apply for a waiver and have no criteria at all, so they didn't apply for a waiver, they only have one per district, not armed. And they chose to hire t- two, I think.
Yeah, they just collect one.
Because the start times at.
Yeah. But yeah, that's, I, I, I had the same concerns, Sabina, I just.
That doesn't speak well of our society, we, uh. Need to harm people with this, oh. I, I mean, I, 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 I understand. The need and that thing, but I'm saying it's a. Pretty vague to comment, this is all.
I agree. Yes.
That's the current society we live in, we have to.
Well, yeah, I agree, yeah.
I'd like to see metal detectors and everything, I mean, I'd rather that. So, these are the all does, okay, we have your report, do you have any questions?
Real quick, piggyback on Officer Soffran and the, uh, breaking entry. Uh, the squirrel posting on stealing vehicles, fourteen thousand.
Yeah, you go lockdown.
Yeah, well, Michael was, I, I didn't, I mean, it was unfortunate, but I needed to get people's attention, so, listen, I found a squirrel stealing my fireworks. Because I needed to track, but we had fourteen thousand just on Facebook alone. So I was hoping that people realize that, you know, just don't leave your thoughts in your car, is that come? I told Mike, it's, it's a blessing of our community that you feel that comfortably, you leave your car unlocked with the keys in it, in Oakmont Borough. Those are legal running too.
Sometimes like just if you don't like.
At least that's actually, I had a problem too, uh, that I actually had turned it to police, uh, police department, uh, after our last council. So, looking through my car.
What?
Yeah. It was, they think, yeah, they didn't, they didn't open it. My work vehicle, they, our galley, looking through my car that looked like it might have had something in it besides just.
Wow, sorry, sorry.
Lastly, under public safety, part three, EMS reports in your packet for the month of July, one hundred and thirty-six dispatches into Oakmont. A total of eighty-three were transported, they asked for reach away five times for the month. And we always keep track of the present attorney home, thirty-five percent of the call for the month of July, and we're back at the present attorney home, but we're back to like normal, so. Um. Next, this year, some action items under public works, let me get to my. Get to my agenda here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, uh. Approve the final invoice number nine oh nine five seven three two three one. In the amount of twenty-one thousand, sixty-two dollars and zero cents. For the Washington Avenue pump station engineering services, and this is to hatch engineer. John made the motion, they clear a second?
I'll second.
Jen seconded? And I just wanted to, uh, mention, I was reading this, we, is this one pay, um?
These are, um, everything was here available. F one and F two.
And any, any other discussion on that? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. I'll make a motion to approve invoice number nine oh nine six five one three five. In the amount of one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars and zero cents. To hatch engineering for the wastewater treatment plant science service, since the date. Someone's made that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any seconds? Any discussion on this?
Just one, for, for the individuals who participated in finance committee, when we received the bid, and we're talking about budgeting for the project. These were the two numbers that had said we were owed, and that's part of our treasure bonds category motion, so. To the penny, we're, we're the same number, so we're okay.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. I make a motion to approve payment recommendation number nine. Finally, the Franco electric in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. For the completion of Plum, Plum Creek pump station rehab contract. John has made this motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Deb seconds? Any discussion?
The total cost for the Plum Creek pump station rehabilitation, which will give it another forty to fifty years of life to it. Seven and hu- seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy cents, total project cost.
Yeah, hopefully some of the lessons learned in this will reduce uncertainty of the main. Projects, basically as far as some of the electrical problem. And I think, I believe you said this was, um, last worked on or installed in nineteen eighty?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Um, any, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, Brick, who wants to make a brick roadway spot repair? All right, I'll try again. Something that was quoted, um, motion to approve payment recommendation number four, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. To M and N Landscape LLC for the twenty twenty-four brick roadway spot repair program. Um, now, she moves, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? I think that was all, that was all, um, the, from last year's, um. Uh, bids.
Yes.
And it was carried over and completed this year. And I think that we have been very happy with this contractor's work on these brick roads, I mean, done a nice job.
Yes.
According to.
I'm not pretending, such, go ahead.
Okay. Um, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it's passed unanimously. Um.
That's four.
Okay, here we have a motion. To approve change order number one and payment recommendation number five, which is final, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and seventy-four cents. To N and N Landscape LLC for the completion of the twenty twenty-four brick roadway spot repair program. Um, is there anyone who would care to make that motion?
Some have.
Deb's made the motion and a second?
I'll second.
Jen seconds? Um, any, anything about that?
Yeah, um, I see in F three, it's N and N lands- landscape, and down here, it's N and N landscape, so.
It's N and N, I believe, isn't it?
It's head and end.
Yeah.
N and N.
She's good, proof for your.
That was a changer.
Changer was to, uh, add some additional noise to the project.
Was that Nancy or Mary, was it?
Nancy, Nancy and Nancy.
Nancy.
Nancy and Nancy, okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it, it's like, oops, what's Mary? It's getting late.
Yeah, we've had a conversation tonight.
Um, okay, so, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, um, that's unanimous, and we're down to the very last one.
And unfortunately, G did not carry over, what you're gonna see is the draft agenda is gonna be emailed out on Wednesdays, that's my ability, a week prior to a meeting?
Wait.
Yeah? You did that one?
No.
F five? Oh, it's another changer, I'm sorry, I'm, I was a blur.
Yes, we're, 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 okay, um, I'd like a motion to approve change orders one and two, and payment recommendation number three, which is final. In the amount of six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. To Boney Construction LLC for the completion of the Oakmont. Bomb VFD sidewalk apron replacement project. There, motion? Was there, well, sitting in the middle of the motion, is there a second? Okay, Amanda seconds. And I believe that was talked about, that there's, there may be an issue here, and.
There's warranty work, so we can go ahead and prove it, and just follow those warranty work. I'm gonna talk to Sean tomorrow about it, basically, they just all data, we cut the check, and just hold on to it. But there, there are warranty provisions inside there, as if they do have to dig that up, they might have to dig up the whole thing. They have the remedy, what's your remedy is?
Cause, uh, at least with the piping underneath, instead of going in sections, it is the whole thing, that has to be one continuous, that I don't know if the. It wasn't, you know, reconnected back into.
Well, can we, can we amend this, um, this motion to, uh, direct? The check be, um, held until satisfactory repairs?
Or, uh, I'll talk to Sean, you can do that, we won't say, we'll, we're checking, we'll say it in the building. We have Sean, he's somebody that, I'll move that motion to amend.
Okay, and a second to that? That's right, yeah.
I always, I don't think you need a formal like before, but it's fine, however.
So it's amended the whole check.
Move the check until.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it's passed unanimously.
I'll try this. Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, Bianca, uh, Jen has stepped up for a minute, but Jen, do you want to enter your? Votes in for Bianca, it's B four and D one, I think it's gonna be unanimous.
Yes, those are, yay.
Okay, and then, um, Mr. Leland just said that an. Motion to amend is not necessary, so is that vote on the original motion, or?
It's on unanimous.
Vote to it, okay, got it.
Thanks, sorry.
Item G, uh, we're gonna make an attempt to start releasing the draft orders, draft agenda is a Wednesday prior to me. And so this is what we have on topics, if you've got anything you want to add, please let me know right away, you can still email me separately. If something crosses your desk, your mind, says, I want this on the agenda, we'll put it in beforehand, if we happen, it's like, we Wednesdays, if I send it out Wednesday, it's sort of a memory. Let me know.
So, but the deadlines remain the same.
The deadlines remain the same, but I'm trying to get you out of drafts, so soon as you see anything.
So if you, if you have a draft, then you know it's gonna be discussed or not, it's, you know, or it's. And dropped.
Two last items, uh, sir, report for council, anything?
Oh, um. This Sunday, um, I would be hosting an event at the library to sponsor students, um, we're looking to collect like. Essential items like cans, like toothbrushes, hygiene products, all that, I know the borough posted a flyer for it, so. Also, if you have any, like, kids are any, youth in the borough, you know, we're gonna have photo ice truck. That we face painting lots of games, so hopefully it's just a good event to start the school year. Like, it's gonna be there, and you make that the issue.
Yeah.
You and I, you and I are gonna talk because the, 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 the actual text that she sent you came from a friend of mine in Georgia, who saw our post, wants to do the same thing at his school.
Oh, reflects the topic, it's great, so, yeah.
I wanna give more information from here.
Yes, so it's two to seven this, this Sunday. And I caught eyes from class. Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
And lastly, we just announced today, we're gonna have a fourth annual free paper shredding event on September thirteenth, which is a Saturday. Starting at nine, going until one, again, we're using the Third Street parking lot in Riverside Park. Um, material we shred there in the proper document construction way, so you can be rest assured. Sensitive material that you want to bring in your shredder will be done in appropriate manner.
I, I always said. It's, it's not that you shred. Okay. Hope it happens, you shred. You have a, there's an annual pick, right?
The staff picnic is coming up in September, yes.
Yeah, so we have date on that?
You know what, we do, I forget it, I will text it to you, email it to you.
And I just wanted to know. That there's a, um, it's, it's sort of a touch of fire truck event. In honor of, uh, Fred Fagel, that's in September too, and I think they're gonna have trucks from all around the region.
Yeah. Yeah, that's September fourteenth on my calendar.
Is it Thanksgiving or August twenty-sixth, Scott?
Honestly, I just blanked on it, yeah, August twenty-sixth.
That's what I have on my calendar.
We did a flyer, they filed seven hundred, this one.
I would take a pick.
That's so obvious, that is.
Let's confirm, yeah.
Is. Okay. That's down at our.
Uh, the bar gets a staff, and it goes, staff, staff, Phil's like, look for the staff. Appreciate you, but, yes.
Um. I will accept a motion to adjourn to executive session, at which we'll be discussing. Um, some litigation matters and, um, employee issues. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
And Jen? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm ready or something.
Aye.
Nate?
Oh.
You know who you are, you're all night.
Okay.
Hi, Bianca.
Thank you.
Good night, hey, am I allowed to come to the picnic?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, cool, thanks.